We do have quorum. Councilmember O'Neil and Councilmember Dixon are on Zoom. So they are here, even though you only see three members of the council.
Thank you. Good evening. I call the July 27th City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I will be conducting roll call and all votes verbally. Councilmember Baum is currently here. Councilmember Brenner?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
She's via Zoom. Bless you. Councilmember Duffield? Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
He's also via Zoom. Mayor Protem Muldoon is here. Mayor Avery?
Here. Thank you. Now is the time for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Phil Iskins.
Just briefly, before we get to that, we'll do the closed session announcement because we do have something to announce this evening. In regards to the litigation item, which is on the agenda under 3A that was filed by concerned owners against undergrounding on Balboa Island versus the city of Newport Beach, the opponents to the undergrounding brought an ex parte application to the court seeking in part restrain the city from holding the public hearing tonight. The court ruled in favor of the city of Newport Beach and noted that based on the evidence before the court, the city was likely to prevail on the merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Iskins? And Mr. Duffield will give the pledge following that. Thank you.
Mayor Avery and esteemed City Council, it's always a privilege to get called up here to give this benediction to the city of Newport Beach. And I would have to say that the greatest need in leadership today would have to be wisdom. Wisdom for leadership to concentrate on the greatest priorities and wisdom to make the right decisions that benefit all of its constituents. It seems this virtue rises the top of sound leadership. Proverbs 14:21 talks about a much-needed wisdom in every city in America and in our country as a whole. This proverb reads, "It is a sin to despise one's neighbor, but blessed is the one who is kind to the needy." Human relationships, like a house, regularly need minor repairs and at times major restorations. The wise person has skill, a skill set to do both. In today's world, the need to resist the tendency to look down on others is a greater need than ever. As a pastor, I am given some authority to quote Scripture, and if it aids at a given opportunity, Romans 2:11, "For there is no respect of persons with God." And what is interesting concerning wisdom is that our Creator wants to give it to us generously if we will only ask. The Word says, "Do any of you need or lack wisdom? Ask God for it. He is generous and enjoys giving it to everyone, so he will give you wisdom." Can we pray? Dear only Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to stand before this great group of people. And Father, we would pray that you would bestow wisdom on this leadership of the city of Newport Beach. And Lord, we thank you for the police department too, Lord, that you would grant them special favor and that they might get the respect of the citizens of this great city. And we pray for all the services of this city as well, Lord, but most of all, we just pray that tonight's agenda would be met with wisdom and grace and gratitude. And we pray these things in His name. And everybody said, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance of this great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first item of business we'll be considering this evening is item number 13, which I've requested to be taken out of order. This is a public hearing for a proposed assessment district number 124, roughly a 50-block area of central Balboa Island. Before we open this matter, does any council member have a conflict regarding this item that they would like to announce?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict related to undergrounding telecommunications and potential source of revenue in business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict due to real property interests.
Thank you. So this is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on protests or objections to the formation of the assessment district number 124, roughly a 50-block area of central Balboa Island. All ballots regarding assessment district number 124 must be received by the city clerk prior to the closing of the public hearing. Council, would we like a staff report? Okay, let's have one.
Mayor, City Council, Jim Houlihan, Deputy Public Works Director. Tonight, we have a quick presentation for you to sort of lay the groundwork. And Mike Senicori, Assistant City Engineer, will present it. Afterwards, we do have consultants available, as well as Mike and myself, if you have any questions. Thank you. Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having this presentation. I'll try to be brief. We have a lot of residents here who'd like to speak on the project. So schedule events, this project has been around for more than what this schedule shows. The actual final request from the proponents for a petition actually dates March 20th, but there were years of conversation since the failure in 2008 of the 80-87 election. We assembled a petition package that was given to the proponents in and around June, and they gathered their signatures and submitted their petition package to us back early February, and we certified their petition, or I should say, council certified the petition on February 23rd. This council voted to move forward with the election procedures on June 8th, and that brings us to tonight. District boundaries, generally, it's the central Balboa Island area. On the far left is actually the assessment district 113, which we're happy to report we are going to be breaking ground in a couple weeks. Residents there should expect construction notices from us as soon as we get details on where they're going to be starting and wrapping around that portion of the west Balboa Island. This district consists of 966 properties, 900 of which are residential, multifamily residential properties. There are 64 commercial properties, mixed-use commercial properties on Aggett and Marine. Again, it's only half of Aggett. The other half is on AD 113. And then two, what we call public facilities on our records, our fire station and the post office building on Marine. The project is a simple one. We're just simply digging trenches to install conduits, handholds, vaults, to take what is overhead on poles and put it underground. Once we're all done with the project, a couple years afterwards, we'll be repaving the affected roadways with brand-new concrete alleys. The streets impacted during the initial construction will be restored as we go along, as we've just done on the peninsula. I won't repeat all the numbers here, but it's a $32.8 million project that covers the cost of design and the installation of facilities and also the financing related to the bond that'll happen on the project if it should move forward. I would note the costs, unlike back in 2008, we had costs for Edison that we had no idea if we could verify them. Here, these costs are based on what the consulting team and the city staff worked on with our Balboa Island, west Balboa Island bids. It just came in. So this is about as accurate a bid representative number and estimate that we could have for a project on Balboa Island as it's based on construction on Balboa Island. So I'm happy to report that. Public notice and to the property owners, as required by law, we have to mail out a notice and a ballot to every property owner within 45 days of the hearing. Ballots were mailed on June 10th as certified by our consultant. The mailing list that we developed is based on the county's assessor role to start, and then also we have detailed information in our GIS system that's updated weekly from our title company, First American. And we mailed out to those best-known property owners that we had information on just before the mailing on June 10th. And with the goal, we're to provide a notice and a ballot to every property owner that we could possibly get to as soon as we could. Several ballots were returned. When they came back, we also got those ballots out to folks and did more research to get them their ballots as well. The ballots, as they come in tonight, it's a weighted election. It's based on dollars. So if you've got so many dollars, it's either dollars for or dollars against. Only ballots submitted now, emphasize again, as will the city clerk, and only ballots before this public hearing is closed will be accepted. Any ballots afterwards or left in the city clerk's office, I know of one that's sitting up there, will not be counted. If somebody needs to have a replacement ballot that's in the audience, we do have replacement ballots here based on the testimony tonight. If you choose to change your vote for any reason, the city clerk has ballots, and you can do that tonight. As of 3:00 PM, we had 769 ballots submitted to the clerk's office, which represents about 80% of the island. I won't go into any more detail. We have other backup slides if you'd like more information, council, but I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. So do we have any council comments? No further council comments? All right. So before opening the public hearing, I ask that each speaker identify themselves and their property. So first, we'll hear from anyone who wishes to speak against the acquisition of the improvements, the assessment district, the underground utilities district, or the method of spread of the proposed assessments. And before we do that, could I have by a show of hands, people who intend to speak tonight against this?
Probably best to get a total number either way. They're planning to speak for or against.
Right. So total number of speakers planning to speak tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, so if you're planning to speak this evening, we'd like to know, just so that we can get a time estimate for how long it's going to be. So if you're planning to speak, could you raise your hands? There's a lot of people, so I'm assuming more than two are going to speak. So four or five?
Okay. All right. So starting off, anyone who wishes to speak against the project, please come forward and do so. You'll have three minutes. No one wishes to speak against the project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
My name is Joe Bush.
And just for a moment, Mr. Bush represents a group of people that are opposed to it, so if we could give him five minutes.
Thank you very much, council. My name is Joe Bush. I'm an attorney with Atkinson Petit.
Mr. Bush, if you can speak into the mic, please.
Yes, with Atkinson Petit here in Newport Beach. I do represent the certain concerned owners against underground on Balboa Island. I was the one who appeared on their behalf this morning in court. Well, I guess it was actually via court call, but we were not actually in court. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Senicori and his staff. As he explained to the court in his affidavit filed yesterday evening, the city has received at least 740 ballots, we now know it's 769 ballots, from the owners of parcels to be impacted by the proposed assessment district. And as Mr. Senicori further explained, since last Thursday or Friday, his staff has been attempting to contact each parcel owner from whom a ballot on this measure has not yet been received. And it is for that reason that I request that the city postpone this hearing so that that effort can continue. My clients advised me that they have still heard from other members of property owners within the district who have not yet received ballots. And I think that it would be imperative that for something like this, with the costs to be imposed, that an attempt be made to contact each and every person. The other reason is, as Mr. Senicori explained to the court this morning, the 2020 property rule was used. And we know now that the assessor's office has issued its 2021 rule, the most recent one, that can be used to locate some of the individuals. We have 769 parcels of property. We've got 7, excuse me, 966 parcels of property, 769 ballots. So there's a difference there. And possibly with a postponement, we can use that new assessor's rule to contact everybody. Why is this important? It's important for everybody who lives on Balboa Island. And I know that there are a lot of engineering issues with respect to this, but the bottom line is, as Mr. Senicori noted, is that the bonded indebtedness is going to be $32.8 million. That's approximately $34,000 of assessment on each parcel. That's on average. I believe his report shows that the largest amount is something in the range of 45, 46. Some of them are less. But that was not known when the 609 property owners submitted their petition earlier this year. They didn't know what the assessment would be, what the cost would be. Now, we understand that the bond is going to be at approximately 5% for 20 years. That means that the total cost over the 20 years is going to be about $52, $52.5 million. That's substantially more than the $32.8 million that was presented earlier today. On average, that means that each home property owner's assessment is going to increase over that 20 years by something in the range of $2,700 to $3,000. And that's a chunk of change for anybody, I think. And we are asking that the council continue the hearing so that more people can submit their ballots, so that everybody can be heard. I do commend again Mr. Senicori for his staff's efforts since last Thursday, but they've only started it as of Thursday. And that's why we need more time to get more people so that a proper assessment can be made by the city council to determine whether the majority are in favor of it or against. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just jump in briefly, I think it's important to note that the financing costs would only apply to those people that choose to finance it who don't take the option of paying cash. And 5% interest, we don't know what the interest rate is going to be in 2023. Mike, what was the most current interest rate on the last assessment district?
Mayor, Aaron, it was 2.12%, and with the added annual administration costs, it's roughly 2.5%. I ran the math on the $34,000. It takes the principal from $1,700 a year to about $2,200 a year if it goes with the 2.1% bond rate. And you're right, in 2023, it could be 5%. And then that monthly cost could be $2,600 or so, as they mentioned.
Right. But we don't know what interest rates are going to be in 2023.
No.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I'll add that we did go to the effort to track down a couple property owners that we were interested in to make sure they got the ballot, but we have not contacted the other 200 or so that haven't submitted at this point. It's just we don't know where their ballots are or if they wanted to vote. I have spoken to a few people that have chosen not to vote. They want to let the majority speak, and they just don't want their name to be out in the public as their vote is a public record. And they chose for that reason not to vote.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak against the project?
Hi, my name is Jody Bowle. I'm not with any organization that's for or against it. I'm speaking as a resident of Balboa Island, a property owner, I should say. My big concern is, I'm concerned for the preservation of cottages with this project because the majority of owners that own the cottages for many years, who've been passed down in their families, many of them have fixed income. I have several friends that have cottages that have fixed income. And originally, I had asked the group if there was going to be any type of accommodation made for people who are on fixed income, if they could prove that, because it's going to be a financial burden to them. And I was also told when we originally filled out our paperwork that then we would have an exact amount. And for me, I don't think that that's the way that it went. I filled it out waiting to see if there was an exact amount, and I don't feel like I ever really received that. But I am worried about those individuals on fixed income not having any plan for them other than they have to pay for it. And there's one very interesting, just as a comment, Southern California has a tremendous amount of power poles on wood everywhere. And so I'm wondering why this undergrounding is so important right now, other than aesthetics? And that is a choice for individuals to do for aesthetics. But if it's not reliable, if there is an issue with it, then what is the rest of Southern California going to do that has millions of wood power poles? And will they be paying for this additional amount of money in the $32,000, $34,000 range? Or will they be supplemented by taxpayers' money? Or will Southern California Edison pay for those? So those are my comments. So I would like to see maybe this reissued a little bit of time so that maybe we could look at what we do for those on fixed income so it doesn't force them to have to sell their cottages. Because $34,000 for a lot of people on the island is not much, but there are people who live on the island for many generations that that's a lot of money. And I do think that we should at least consider them in this. So that's my comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come forward.
I'll just take a minute. My name is Jumpshad Duster, and I'm a resident and homeowner on Balboa Island. Mr. Senicori had some dollar numbers there that were in three categories, the construction cost, financing cost, and the administrative cost. And he said that this estimate is based on the west end. The construction cost for central Balboa Island is $6,000 for a property, or 25% more than for the west end. And I don't know why, but it is. I mean, the other numbers can go up and down, but that's the main cost, and it's $6,000 a property more. Thank you.
Mr. Senicori, do you have any thoughts on that?
The actual cost for the west end project averaged around $29,000 or so. As we just awarded the project, the cost came in and basically absorbed all the contingency that we had voted in in 2018. And we only have 4% or 5% contingency now to build that project. So we're very tight on that project. The council chose to move forward with that, with that understanding, and we'll hold the line as best we can. But as you run the cost on this district, based on that construction cost with the contingency, it averages out to the $33,000, $34,000.
Thank you.
Council, Mayor Avery, distinguished council members and staff. I just wanted to come up and make some observations. I'm not here to lobby you one way or the other. A lot of people said, Jim Maloney, that's my name, Chair of the Balboa Island Preservation Association, why are you involved in this project? Why are you getting people riled up? I know the city and the staff and the council don't like it when people get riled up. I've spent close to $100,000 on undergrounding on my various properties, and if this one goes through, I will exceed $100,000. So I consider myself someone who's knowledgeable about the subject. And I spent a lot of time, and I met with Mr. Senicori and Mr. Cooper, and I thought they were doing a great job of trying to reduce costs by taking the project back from SCE. I didn't think that SCE did a good job, and it took them too long, and that resulted in a drive-up of the costs. But when I looked at what I paid on my other properties, which in some cases was $15,000 or $20,000 or $25,000, when this one came in at $35,000, plus trenching costs, plus panel boxes, I'm looking at another $40,000, $45,000. And as the guy who writes the check, I can speak authoritatively as to what this costs. It is not just the pole to the property line. And I just started looking into this. And one of the things I didn't like was the city, in its latest materials that it's submitted to you, reserves the right to charge $100 per parcel administrative fee on collecting this tax, this assessment. And that's close to 1,000 properties in this district, $100 per property per year. If everyone financed, that's $2 million, okay, to collect this fee from the tax assessor's office. I find that offensive to ask the residents to pay a max of over 20 years, $2 million in collection fees. Credit cards don't charge that much. I got onto it because of the cottages. I've talked to so many older people down there. We know someone who's 103 that owns three homes. This will result in more homes getting sold, more three stories. It will change the character of the island. So that's why I got involved. I have just one question for Mr. Cooper. I understand you guys have been doing a great job trying to get as many votes out. But as I understand the law, I thought we were supposed to open them here tonight and see who voted and see who didn't vote. So I'm curious, how were we chasing down people that didn't vote if we didn't know who voted because they were all in sealed envelopes? And I and others in our group are the ones who are talking to residents. I know people on both sides, people who are for and people who are against, said I never got a ballot. And I'll just give you a couple examples. Well, my tax statement gets impounded to the bank. I used to have a property on the South Bayfront called Pilates by the Bay, but I closed that in 2019. I never got a ballot. I went over to 504 South Bayfront looking for my ballot. It's not there. There are some people that have LLCs, their property's held in LLCs, their property business address is in Vegas. So I just find it curious that on June 10th, right before the opening of the pandemic, when everybody's going on vacation and traveling the country, just two seconds, we send it out, we put a quick 45-day timeframe on this, and there's still a bunch of people that haven't voted. And I just don't like that the majority of those who voted, it's a plurality, not a pure majority. So 306 people tonight can decide that 1,000 people pick up $32 million plus interest. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Just briefly, to address the point about how the city knows who's voted, who hasn't. There's a number on the envelopes, so we know basically from that number who's voted and who hasn't.
Thank you.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I do not own a property in this proposed assessment district, and I'm not speaking for or against it, but I know this is not the city's first assessment district that it's formed, and I'm pretty sure it won't be the last. So I just had a comment about a point that did not seem to me clearly covered in the staff report, and I think is probably an important one that at least in the future needs closer attention. And I would direct you to page 52 through 54 of the staff report, which is the contractor's description of how they came up with the assessment amounts. And these three pages are covering what it calls special benefits and general benefits. The concept being that the cost of undergrounding benefits not only the individual property owners, but it has a more general benefit for the assessment district as a whole and for perhaps the city as a whole, including visitors, in this case, to Balboa Island or wherever the undergrounding is happening. And apparently, under our California Constitution, the assessment is supposed to cover only the special benefit to the people being assessed. And normally, the remaining part, the general benefit to the public as a whole, would be an obligation of our general fund. But the last paragraph here on page 13-54 is rather arbitrarily, it seems to me, saying that the general public benefit in this case is going to be less than 5%. I don't know quite where that came up from. And the exact amount doesn't matter anyway because the Edison Company And the exact amount doesn't matter anyway, because the Edison Company is going to be paying, or the utility company's part of the cost of this, and the assessees will be paying less than their actual benefit to them. It's not quite clear to me how the utility company contribution makes the general fund amount disappear. So perhaps the logic of this, and where we come up with these numbers like 5%, 95%, and 20% come from, needs closer attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Money, 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 money. It's a lifestyle down there. It's so nice. It's sweet. I've been there since the '70s, back and forth to Connecticut. It's like the only place you could really have sanity around here. You're going to change it. Why does it need changing? I don't understand. What you did to that Mariners on Balboa Peninsula is horrid. There's no tennis courts anymore. Everybody has to do nothing all the time. There's place to go there, there are things to do. It's a lifestyle that's sweet, and a lot of people love it because it's really packed most of the time when there's anything going on. And I just think it's really sad, you know, this money situation. There's no money for it. There is no money for it, apparently. Why do you have to change it? Most people there are very happy what they're doing.
Thank you. Next comment, please. All right. If we have no further folks that want to speak against the project, we will hear from those that are going to speak in favor. So if we have anyone that wants to speak in favor of the project, come forward.
Patty Jansen. I live on Balboa Island, and I've been there for many years. And I just want to say, there's lots of sides to every issue. My main concern and my main priority, the beauty's wonderful, but we live six feet from each other on the island. And I'm actually kind of surprised that we haven't had a major catastrophe with one of the older houses burning, with the shake roof next to one next door, and having a real problem. And undergrounding has proven in many areas around the country to be the safest, most efficient way to get power to everyone. And I think we all should look at a lesson learned that's still continuing in Northern California. Lots of loss of life, lots of lots of houses because of wires and poles above ground. And those utility companies in Northern California, in hindsight, have realized we should have put them underground a long time ago. There's lots of communities that would still be around today in Northern California had they had done that. I don't want to look back from now, if this doesn't pass, any loss of life, because one life is worth $32,000 to me, or $50,000. And for the people that have an affordability issue, there's ways to pay it over time. But look at the percentage of those people that have hardship compared to the rest of the 1,300 people that live, I'm sorry, Little Island and Big Island are like 1,400. So it's over 1,000. Of how many of those people have a hardship, maybe there's a way to subsidize those with true hardship by the rest of everybody else. Because, again, my number-one concern and worry is fire trucks, police department, and I encourage you on the council, as in getting a totally different objective opinion, talk to the police and fire department of how they feel about putting those utilities underground. Talk to them. Because if we don't do it, we're going to get wider pools, and the fire trucks said already, they're going to have a hard time accessing people that need help, and the police department. And so I just have to emphasize, we should be really thinking about overall the big picture. And the big picture is less chance of fire and a safer community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, in favor of the project. Please come forward.
I live on Balboa Island. My name is Lynn O'Brien. I live in a cottage, and I'm very much in favor of this undergrounding. I actually have a telephone pole on the south, I'm not very good with directions, I think it's the southwest, maybe the southeast corner in the front of my house. And when we bought the house, the telephone pole was there, but it was a long time ago and before internet became the thing. And also the time when I could call the telephone company that was located across the way, over on the peninsula, and the administrative officials would come over and talk to me if I had a problem with what was going on with the wires. Now, there is no telling how many people are going to come and climb that pole and damage a very expensive tree I have to give more internet coverage to the businesses uptown. And those businesses take a lot of precedent, so I think it's very foolish to not have the underground utilities where you can provide all of the internet access that is needed for those businesses, which provide a great deal of, sort of, their big source of income. Finally, when I read the way we were assessed, I was a little upset too, because who can say that I am going to get more benefit than somebody else? Because everybody will benefit if those, you know, aesthetically, if those lines come down. And we really have never had a problem that was dangerous. Once, when a transformer went out, SCE came out, fixed it immediately. I didn't even have to pay a dime. All I did was call and tell them I wanted a fix. So it is just time. There is a telephone pole behind my house that is ready to fall down, and SCE can't get it down. It's too dangerous, and they're in the right-of-way, and we need to do this now. Everybody drives a huge sub, and people cannot get through the alleys. So, and I'm old, and I have a fixed income, but we are going to go ahead with this project. And also, it is less expensive than it was going to be, it was going to be 12 years ago. So everybody's done a pretty good job to try to push this through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm Pam Howard. We have a residence at 202 Diamond. A couple of things I want to address that haven't been referenced yet is, in terms of getting the ballots out, I believe those ballots have been out for quite a while. And I know that my husband and I worked on going door-to-door, talking to people, finding out where the owners actually lived, calling them, mailing them, emailing them. And I know several people on the island have been doing the same thing. So after two months of this, if people don't respond, or don't take the time or care enough, I think that's telling you how they feel about it. Because if you feel strongly one way or another, you're going to respond. So do the rest of us that are for the project not, I mean, is it not a case of the greater good? If somebody doesn't take enough time or care enough to respond, and that's giving a message right there. You know, the Little Island has the utilities underground. They're now working on the, from Aggett to Collins. I believe most of the islands in the bay all have utilities underground. So this isn't something new, or we're asking to do something out of the ordinary. There's a reason why they're all going underground, for safety, for cost, for aesthetics. I think the pricing, we were going to do it a few years ago, it would have been less. And if we keep waiting and waiting, the cost is just going to go up. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I do, and I do feel strongly about, there's one gentleman on the island, we all know who that is, that is very against the utilities, and I'm just going to say it, his utilities are already underground. And come on. I mean, I'm a bit real believer in the greater good, and I think some people are getting very selfish about this and not thinking of what's best for the island. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Sue Pearl. I'm a resident and property owner on Balboa Island. For the last year, I've been working alongside a group of nearly 50 Balboa Island residents under the direction and leadership of the proponents who submitted the underground utility petition: Lee Pearl, Jim Kelly, Tom Houston, and Larry Calistad. We've diligently attempted to educate and inform property owners about the process of undergrounding the utilities. Our block captains made personal contact with individuals, encouraging them to vote, and we tracked down property owners who did not live on Balboa Island. We made every attempt to present factual information and directed residents to our website or that of the Newport Beach. We tried to stay on track and not get distracted by any confusing information. The purpose before us right now is to determine through a voting process if there are enough property owners in favor of undergrounding the utilities to move forward with forming an assessment district. We're not here to discuss the design process. That'll be done only after it's determined if we move forward. One concern I have is the perception that many individuals have expressed to me, that some city council members are indebted to Bob McCaffrey, and that could affect the outcome of the project. I trust your integrity and ethics. I don't believe this should be an issue. After all, the residents of Balboa Island make up an important voting bloc in local elections, and by far, the majority of both the Big Island and Little Island are strongly in favor of undergrounding the utilities. We've worked very hard for the past year. Uncountable hours have been spent trying to move this project forward. Nearly all of the property owners that I've spoken to simply say, why would anyone be against undergrounding the utilities? They cite the obvious benefits of safety, convenience, and of course, aesthetics. Currently, it's impossible for fire trucks to go down many of our alleys. In the alley behind our house, even the trash truck can't clear the poles. It scrapes against it every week. I hear, I heard of a resident who wiped out the whole side of their brand-new SUV trying to clear a pole in the alley. The benefits are obvious and many. Thank you for letting me speak. Now let's move this project forward.
Don't allow SUVs on the island.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Does anyone else wish to speak to this?
I just have one little question. If everybody is paying $34,000, and that adds up to the $33 million, why do we have to have a bond that costs interest?
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. It's really nice to be before you today. It's been a long process, and I think this evening, hopefully, we can end it with the counting of the votes. I'd like to, you know, thank everybody that was involved in the project. I also want to, you know, compliment the opposition, because I don't think we had any foul words. I didn't receive any emails. And they were very free to make whatever comments they felt was important to educate the residents of the island. So I think, hopefully, tonight, we'll end the process with a positive project that can move forward. But we still have some work to do. I think Jody noted that we need to make sure that nobody in our district will have a financial burden from the project. We have people on the island interested in helping with those financial needs. And during the process, I just wanted the council to know that I really only heard from a few, I think maybe two residents, and I've spoken and been involved in this project for a long time now, that indicated they might have some kind of financial need. And we will commit that that does not happen if this project moves forward. When the residents attempted the project, I guess it's 12 years ago, the cost was $17,000 per average lot. If it had passed 12 years ago, we wouldn't be having this meeting today. And Lee and Sue Pearl would have moved to Balboa Island with underground utilities, and we wouldn't have invested the time that we did to determine if our property owners would like this project to move forward. We appreciate the opportunity to bring the project forward, and I want to thank all the volunteers, the city staff, and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Does anyone else want to come forward to speak for the project? All right. Seeing none, we'll go back to the process. All written protests and ballots must have been received by the city clerk at this time, and that after this time, no more written protests or ballots may be submitted. So the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk?
The public is welcome to view the ballot counting in the community room, and the individuals counting the ballots have been deputized to do so.
Thank you. So we will continue with our agenda until the results are tabulated.
Yeah, and I think we have to take a quick break, Mayor Avery, because the law says we have to start the council redistricting discussion at a time certain, and we note that for 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00. Okay. So we'll be back to our agenda in about six minutes. Thank you. We're going to move forward and go into, the study session is next on our agenda, and that's item SS1, discussion about council redistricting. And we have a report.
We do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Avery. Thank you very much. And city council members. I'm Simone Jurges, Community Development Director. With me is our Systems and Admin Manager, Dan Capagnolo. We want to talk with you, we have a brief presentation. We're just going to talk about the council redistricting that our city charter requires us to do every time the feds produce their national census. And so we know the census is going to be coming out here in August. Our charter requires us to study the council district mapping and comply with the federal law and the state law and our local law. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dan here to provide the presentation. Just to keep in mind that we do have a small time constraint. We have to get, update our maps, our council district maps, 151 days prior to the next election. So that puts us at around the July 2022 timeframe. We're going to share with you an actual schedule, tentative schedule, and we're going to be able to hit that timeframe. And after the presentation, we're open to any comments or questions you may have about the redistricting process. So go ahead, let Dan take it over.
Great. Thank you, Simone. Mayor Avery, members of the city council, good evening. Dan Capagnolo with the Community Development Department. So what I want to do is just walk you through a couple of slides that kind of outline the process of what we need to do to complete the exercise, as Simone mentioned. Let me get a little closer there. Okay, so first off, I want to start out with our existing council configuration. So this is all of our seven council districts. And the last time we updated this was back in 2011, following the census 2010. And at that time, we had about 85,186 people in the city, and that equated to about 12,000 per district. Okay? Now, at the time, we Now, at the time, we did have a significant shift in, in the council districts because of, from, from 2003, which is the next slide, so this is the previous map, 2003 to 2010, we had a significant amount of annexations activity in the city. So first off was Newport Coast, then we had West Santa Ana Heights, west and east of Santa Ana Heights, and then also Bay Knolls. So that, that brought a lot of population and housing units into the city, and what that did is it shifted all that population to the east, and clockwise, if you will. So if you see the, this is the previous map, and you can see, I'm going to go back to the current map, and you can see that one, portion of one goes into two, two goes into three, three moves up to the airport area, four moves down into five, and so forth, so you can see that shift. And so here's where we're at currently. From 2010 to, to current day, we've only had one annexation in the city, and that was about a 10, 10-unit or so unincorporated parcel called the Emerson Track up in District 3, just off of Irvine Avenue. Okay, so our Charter section 1005 on redistricting, so these are kind of the main points that we need to comply with. So every 10 years, following the national census, which we've just completed one, the council appoints a redistricting ad hoc committee to analyze the, the data, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. The districts must be fair and logical, districts must provide contiguous and compact territories, districts must provide fair representation. So the formation and role of the, the ad hoc committee, and 10 years ago, we had a, a three-member council, or members from the city council. It is a Brown Act Committee, public noticing and agendas, and we do want to encourage that, to have consistent public noticing, so we do comply with the election code, and also kind of maximize that, that public input and participation. The committee will review the census 2020 data results, and then any sort of redistricting mapping options. They'll consider public input throughout the process, and then finally, report recommended maps back to the city council for final adoption, maps or map. So there's been recent changes in the election code, Fair Maps Act of 2020, Assembly Bill 849, which outlines, basically what it tried to do is streamline and standardize the redistricting process between cities and counties. And so these are some, some major points that we need to comply with. So we are under the gun here, adopt it, the new maps by April 15, 2022, so we want to try to wrap up and have those maps adopted by then. Also, there's four public hearing requirements, a minimum of four public hearings during this process. First one is prior to the draft map being released, there's two that are after the draft map, maps are released. One needs to be held on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, or, or after 6:00 p.m. on the weekdays, Monday through Friday. The public hearing must take place at the time that it's noticed, so if it is part of an agenda with multiple items, it needs to start at the time that it's noticed or shortly thereafter. And also, the redistricting ad hoc committee public notices can count towards those public hearings. Some additional criteria for the Fair Maps Act that we need to follow, and this would be in important, ranking importance from left to right, and the committee will also get more, they'll take more of a deep dive into this. So federal laws, we need, this is the most important one, equal population, Federal Voting Rights Act compliance, no racial gerrymandering. The California criteria is similar to our, our charter, with geographically contiguous areas, undivided neighborhoods, and communities of interest, easily identifiable boundaries, compact territories, and shall not favor or discriminate against any political party. And then some additional redistricting principles would respect voters' choices, avoid head-to-head contests, future population growth, and minimize election year changes. And so, like I said, the, the committee will be charged with, with going through, you know, a lot of these in the analysis. So to roll out a tentative schedule, we are providing a study session introductory tonight. Then, the important date of August 16, this is when the, the census data is going to be made available, and obviously, this tentative schedule is contingent upon the release of that information, because we need that data to provide the demographic analysis for the rest of the city. Then we're thinking in September 28, we'd come back with a resolution for formation of the city council ad hoc committee, start meetings in October, and that's where the subcommittee will be presented the data. November, thinking we can post revised draft maps for public review, and maybe late January, possibly early February, the subcommittee recommendations could be made to the council. March, we can have a city council meeting to introduce the ordens, and then finally, to meet our deadline in April, a city council meeting for final adoption. During the process, we really encourage, we want to encourage public engagement and public participation, and, you know, that would be through variety of sources, like our city website, we can provide various print publications, we can use our social media outlets, as well as sending news alert for anyone that wants to be involved or, you know, stay informed of the situation. And then also, the ad hoc committee meetings will be publicly noticed and also be held in the city council chambers. So some of the immediate next steps would be to formation of the ad hoc committee, like I mentioned in September. The consultant, our consultant, our demographer, who will perform demographic analysis on the census 2020 data and get that prepared for the subcommittee. We're going to present those results to the subcommittee, possibly in October. And that concludes my presentation. They'll be available for any questions. Also, Justin Levitt, our consultant from National Demographic and Company, is also here as well to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments from the council? All right.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, this is Will.
Yeah, Will, go ahead, please.
I had one quick question. Do we have any agreements in the, any of the annexation agreements requiring any particular representation, such as, I've, I'd always been told that the Newport Coast annexation agreement contained a provision requiring two council members represent portions of Newport Coast. Is that true? And then, do we have any other agreements, anything, anything similar to that that we need to consider when we're moving forward? Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember O'Neill, we did review the pre-annexation agreement for Newport Coast. It does mention about council representation, but then actually refers back to the city charter.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah. And then also, was silent in any of the Bay Knolls or Santa Ana Heights annexation, pre-annexations agreements?
All right, do we have any other questions, comments from council? All right, we'll go out and hear comments from the public on this item now.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, regarding the appointment of this ad hoc committee, it is true that our city charter refers to a committee being appointed every 10 years for the purpose of considering the district boundaries. And it has traditionally been an ad hoc committee consisting of three council members, typically ones who would not be running for reelection. But the idea that it is made up of council members is not in our charter, so you are perfectly free to create a committee of citizens, and in fact, the election code of the state of California has, I think, been revised perhaps in the last 10 years, and it provides you two options for creating a citizens' redistricting committee. One is a totally independent one, that you would appoint members, and they would make the redistricting decision entirely for you. And the second is something called a hybrid committee, which you would appoint members, and they would come back to you with two map options, and you would have to choose one or the other of their two options that they presented to you. And I think either of those modes would be consistent with our city charter. Perhaps it's not important this time, if we're not contemplating a big change, but you, you should at least, I think I am speaking correctly, and you should know that you are not bound to create an ad hoc committee of council members to make the recommendation or even to do the redistricting. Second point I would make, obviously, obvious question to ask is, although we may not have the census data until next month, do we have any guess as to how much the population has changed in our districts over the last 10 years? And then finally, a point that was made in the presentation but may not be obvious to you, this, this all has to do with trying to get equal representation, but under the federal law, what you're supposed to do is get equal number of people, not equal number of voters in the district, so it's, the people elected under that concept are supposed to be representing everybody, not just the voters. And then the application of this entire redistricting idea to Newport Beach is a bit strange, because we go to all the trouble of trying to equalize representation, and yet, the seven of you are not actually representing the district, you are simply coming from that district, so this whole exercise is just to choose where a member can be elected from. They are not actually representing those people. So the entire concept is a little strange in its strict application to Newport Beach. Which leads me to the idea that perhaps we should eliminate the districts entirely, change our charter to do that, or change our charter so that the people in those districts that we so carefully equalize actually vote for you individually, so that we have voting by district. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item? All right, and I think you pretty much got it at this point, no further direction from council?
Yep, we're all good, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. All right, Madam Clerk?
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. All right, now is the time for council announcements and/or reports from council members on committee activities. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports?
My only announcement is that I attended the mayor's reception, and our mayor did a great job of representing us with his speech. In fact, a couple of the last speeches I've heard from you have been excellent, so the one you did at the Sailing Oasis Sailing, it's like the mayor was made for that.
Right up my alley.
Yeah. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neill?
I will echo that, thank you.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, a couple of things, yes, I too was at the mayor's reception, you did an outstanding job, and it was just an excellent event, and special thanks to Speak Up Newport for putting that forward. We had an aviation committee meeting last Monday, a week ago Monday, and the ad hoc committee members are all working together on their respective areas of, of study related to airport operations, quiet skies for the general aviation flights, looking at flight departure data. Our next meeting is August, the 3rd Monday in August, that's, I don't know if that's for sure yet, but for sure, September, and we're going to focus deep diving on noise, our favorite topic, and looking at the data and what we're collecting. So that always continues to be good. Also, I attended, as did the city manager, a half-day strategic planning session for ACCOC on important matters to cities before the legislature. And our city manager is the city manager representative on ACCOC, so that's a really good opportunity for Newport Beach to be well represented, and I think that's it. Thank you very much. I don't think anything can compete with what's on the screen, though.
Thank you. Councilmember Palm?
Thank you, Mayor. Since this whole meeting has been a little out of order, I'm going to throw in a little out of order thing right here. I would like to move to continue item number six, just due to shifting information and kind of a, a constant change, and if that's something we can go forward with, I appreciate it.
Great. All right, that'll be in Mr. Muldoon's motion. All right, Councilmember Duffield?
Mayor Protem? Do I need to brag for you? Will you please tell the story? So, former mayor and councilmember Duffy Duffield took a small trip to Hawaii on a sailboat. I went to the grocery store and work, this guy went to Hawaii in a sailboat, was it nine continuous days of sailing. He was the helmsman, and his boat came in first with their group, and I'll tell you, just really courageous and great story to hear. The mayor mentioned it in his speech, which was a great speech, and we were surrounded by great men and women on this diet, so congratulations, Mr. Duffield.
I can follow up. Even more. So I attended the ad hoc committee on homelessness, and then there was a great lunch for the group that's behind the effort to be kind, for students to be kind to each other, that O'Neill and I attended, which was really great. And I attended an event from the Corona del Mar Library Foundation, and then I went to the Corona del Mar Residents Association Board Meeting, which I really enjoyed, and then there was the mayor's reception, and I went to the OC Fair, a gathering of government officials, which doesn't sound like a lot of fun, but actually, it was. And then last night, I attended the Governor's Cup, which is a sailing regatta going on right now for youth from countries all over the world, and it's being sailed offshore all this week, and a really good event at Balboa Yak Club. A gentleman named Andy Rose was the emcee, and he did an incredible job of bringing these young men and women up on stage, and, you know, just, it was really impressive how he elicited some great comments from them. And then finally, I wanted to pile on Protem's, congratulations, and Mr. Duffield. And so, this boat that you're seeing here is a Far 57, and the boat's like 30 years old, but it's been taken care of by someone very well, a good friend of Mr. Duffield's. And I will just, I am so jealous, that's all I got to say, because this is an extraordinary year for the race to Honolulu, 2,250 miles to Hawaii, and the wind was, except for the first 15 hours or so, the wind was incredible. So these photos, you see the boat going along, it was doing that the entire time across the Pacific. And I will tell you, having done 13 of these races, it is a really difficult thing to achieve, to do, because it's so hard on your body, and your working shifts, you know, three on, three, three off, that kind of thing, your sleep pattern gets disrupted, and it, it is constant maintenance and taking care of the boat, steering and the rest of it. So it's a huge accomplishment to win your class and to be second to finish in the race is extraordinary. So they have it online, and I followed it, I was, I was up at 2:00 in the morning, I normally wake up around 2:00 or 3:00 anyway, and I'm clicking to see where Duffy is at the time, and, you know, it was just, it was fabulous, so I'm glad there was that opportunity to armchair sail. But just, just great, and good job, councilman, good job, fantastic.
Well, one, I would much rather be lucky than good, that's, that's how we explain it all, but that was my 15th one of those, so I'm going to be in Transpac Anonymous next year, hopefully going every month to the meetings.
Yes, and that is a real group, by the way, for people that get lured into doing the race, and on day two, they just wonder why in the hell they decided to go, because it is so miserable. These photos here, you see, are at the finish, and it's bright sunshine, and that happens every time, and that makes you forget the previous 11 days, and that's why there's Transpac Anonymous. All right, back to regular business, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 11. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through 11?
I was gonna pull item 6, but since Noah has asked to continue it, I don't know how that works.
It's moot. Yeah. Right. Councilmember O'Neil?
Noting that item number 9 is not an actual final agreement and is instead an exclusive negotiating agreement, I have nothing to pull.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, I was going to pull item number 6, but certainly willing to defer that to what Mr. Blom wants to do. And Mr. O'Neil clarified, number 9, I wanted to say the same thing. Thank you very much. I have nothing to pull.
Thank you. Councilmember Blom?
Thank you. I have a recusal on item 9 due to real property interests.
Thank you. Councilmember Duffield?
I have mine.
Mayor Protem Muldoon?
And I think that continuance is to the next meeting, if you want to add that for number 6.
Thank you. Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have a motion for you when you're ready?
Thank you. And myself, I have none.
Okay, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Move the balance of consent calendar, items 1 through 11, with amendment to the minutes, with item 6 continued by Councilmember Blom, and item 9 declared conflict also by Councilmember Blom. Blom with clarifications, and item number 9 by Councilmember O'Neil.
Is there a second?
A second?
Thank you. Please vote.
Public comments?
Yeah, you have public comments. Any public comments on the consent calendar? Please come forward.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Avery and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Regarding item number 9, which is the approval of an exclusive negotiating agreement with Lido House Hotel for the lease of the city property, which is the old fire station at 475 32nd Street, I submitted some written comments about that. My comment is about the material that is available to the public in the lobby outside. There is a multi-page document out there. The last part of it was posted online, and it's a letter from the Fritz Duda Company seeking to be part of the negotiations. But then stapled on top of that is something that says, it looks like the same letter, it says "response" in red, and then it seems to be that letter all marked up, a whole bunch of red stuff. My comment is, this does not identify who this came from, whose response is this. People are certainly free to make anonymous comments to the City Council, but my comment or question is, did the person who sent this response to the Fritz Duda letter purposely intend to be anonymous, or did they want us to know who provided this response? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment on consent calendar?
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name's Nancy Scarborough, and I'm commenting on the consent calendar number 9 tonight. I'm a little confused about, even with Will's, Councilman O'Neil's explanation, I'm a little confused about what that is really saying. I find it worrisome that if this has actually been negotiated and the payment and terms have been negotiated, which it looks like in the documentation of the staff report, this seems like this should be something that would be openly discussed in public meetings rather than buried in a consent calendar. So if it has not been determined, and those issues have not been actually codified, then I apologize for my misunderstanding, because the way it reads, it's very confusing to me. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that if this had been discussed publicly, and maybe it still can be, I think that public comment would have had some constructive suggestions. One would be, was the land considered for 100% affordable project, a senior project, to help us with our RENA numbers? Would there be a benefit to building a public parking structure that would allow us to swap some parking for some of the congested residential neighborhoods on the peninsula, maybe the Finley Track or Newport Island? Parking generates income for the city, has the income that might have been generated from public parking, studied to determine if the leasing of the land to Lido House Hotel has a positive or negative impact on the city's income? And is there a higher value use for this than leasing it for what appears to be $4,000 a month? So I'm confused and would like clarification. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is John Loper. I'm representing the Fritz Duda Company. And we had sent a letter, and we wanted to make sure the council was aware of the letter we sent in from Paul Tangway, who was unable to be here tonight on July 23rd, about alternative way of working with the fire station, the Via Lido Plaza, and the Lido House Hotel to trade some land to increase parking and provide additional public parking. So we'd like to be, have this letter, make sure that's on the record, and look at this alternative in the discussions with the exclusive right to negotiate with the Lido House. We'd like to be part of the discussions, because we believe that we can improve circulation and improve public parking, and improve the parking for the Lido House, which is, impacts the neighborhood, and for truck traffic in and out of Via Lido Plaza. So if you have any questions, we're available and would like to be part of these discussions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, on non-agenda items, or on consent items, rather. Seeing none? All right.
And just briefly, I'd like to note that Councilmember Blom left the room because there was so much discussion related to agenda item number 9.
Ms. Brenner?
Erin, I would like for you to explain to the public how these things are discussed in closed session, but yet, when it comes out for approval, that's when the actual public hearing takes place, because it's been, or maybe Simone will do that, because it's been confusing to me since I'm now on council, how this discussion all takes place before it actually comes out for the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Brenner. I'm gonna go ahead and take the question. So, first of all, a couple comments tonight. The red marks and edits on the Fritz Duda letter, that was from RD Olson, because they took the Fritz Duda comments seriously, and they reviewed it, and they had some constructive comments, that they don't think the Fritz Duda plan works. So I received that. We made that part of the public record process. So that's one piece. Tonight's item is an exclusive negotiating agreement. There's been some preliminary discussions and preliminary negotiating terms. In general, we understand what those terms are, but we haven't solidified it yet. We still need to amend the lease agreement. We haven't done that yet. There's still a project. We still need to do environmental review. We still need to analyze the project. All that is still being worked on, and all that will come before the City Council with an actual amendment to the lease agreement, where the council will actually vote on whether these terms are appropriate or not appropriate. We've had preliminary terms. We feel like we're in a place now where we can go ahead and enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement, basically kind of, not lock us in, but kind of marry us to working with RD Olson while we continue that entitlement process for the project that they want. We have looked at values, affordable housing values, what is the value of the dirt, what if we sold the dirt? We're not selling the dirt. We want to continue this relationship that we have with RD Olson. So it is a joint venture. It is a public-private partnership that we want to continue with, and that's the whole point of the ENA, is to allow us to continue that working relationship. And at some point, we'll have an actual project that'll go through the Planning Commission, come back to the City Council with an actual amendment to the lease, with all the terms that are gonna be spelled out for the City Council for their consideration. Tonight is an exclusive negotiating agreement. It allows the council to continue working with RD Olson, and RD Olson has some level of comfort knowing that the city's gonna continue working with them for this parcel, because we think it's the right move, and we think it's the right value for the city.
The time for public comments would be when that negotiated agreement comes back to the City Council?
Yes, exactly. It'll go through the Planning Commission, so there'll be some public input on the entitlement project of the, the entitlement of the project. And then eventually, that will come before the City Council, because it will be a general plan amendment, and an amendment to their existing lease agreement.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other public comments on the consent calendar items? Thank you. I think we have a vote.
Let's go ahead and bring Councilwoman Blom back.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Please vote on the consent calendar.
For consent calendar, I have to do this verbally, so, Councilmember Blom?
Aye.
Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Aye.
And Mayor Avery?
Yes.
That was unanimous, 7-0.
Thank you. All right, we're now going to the other public hearing item, and this is item 12, Resolution Number 2021-70.
Mayor? We're actually on public comments on non-agenda items.
Right.
Thank you.
Non-agenda items, please come forward.
Busy night tonight. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Nancy Scarborough. I'm commenting on the non-agenda items, but it is related to, in, it is related to the mixed-use project at 2510, not directly, my comments are not directly. The study session on July 13th, there was an updated draft of the general plan housing element, which was discussed. I made a presentation with a graph that showed the potential number of residential units and the worst-case scenario for projects with different inclusionary rates and different density bonuses. Included the total number of units based on 5%, 15%, 20%, and 40% inclusionary rates, and density bonuses of 25%, or 20%, 35%, and 50%. The math is really complicated. But if all of these projects had a 5% affordable units with the state-mandated 20% density, such as the 2510 building, Newport Beach would be opening itself up to approximately 39,000 units. Of course, this can't happen, it's not possible, but even at half of that, the numbers are daunting, and it is impossible to imagine. Put simply, for those who don't follow the housing discussion closely, 40% inclusionary rate means that on a project with 100 units, 40 of them would be affordable and 60 of them would be at market rate. If a developer includes any affordable housing in their projects, which they are allowed by law, varying density bonuses ranging from 25% to 35% to 50% are additional market-rate units, not affordable units, and the numbers add up quickly. Our RENA allocation requires that we plan for 2,386 low and very low-income units. The current draft is based on the expectation that we can achieve 40% affordable units. This is very unlikely, but if it were possible, within the, with the 35% density bonus allowed by law, the, we would be planning for 11,250 units if all the projects were similar circumstances to 2510. As you can adjust the ratio up and down, the numbers change, and that's how you get to the 39,000 units that I spoke of earlier. The only defense mechanism the state allows is a city can adopt an inclusionary requirement ordinance. At the study session on July 13th, I was left with the impression that the council would not be adopting a temporary inclusionary, temporary inclusionary ordinance for at least six to 12 months. The final inclusionary ordinance is not due for 36 months. During that time, we will likely have developers submit projects, just like the one tonight, for approval and entitlements with a minimum number of affordable units and the maximum number of market-rate units. This will be a disaster for the city of Newport Beach. We could be at risk of approving tens of thousands of new units in a market-rate category if we continue allowing this with minimum number of affordable units. I urge you to please listen to the few residents who have been following the housing element update process, and develop and adopt an inclusionary requirement as quickly as possible. As I said, on July 13th, this is our collective legacy. Residents may not know this is coming, but they will certainly notice these projects when they become entitled and start to be built. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Dave Tanner. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the general plan update, but in reality, I'm doing this to buy some time, because on the 2510 project, the applicant's legal representative is running late in traffic, so trying to get a few minutes, 10 minutes out. So with your general plan update, I think there's another thing that you need to consider. And these are daunting regulations the state has put on the city. I don't think anybody in the city likes these, but one of the things I want you to start thinking about is, what's going on in Newport Beach isn't unique. Huntington Beach, Irvine, Costa Mesa, all the surrounding cities are dealing with this. And what Nancy just talked about, and what staff has talked about, is the development potential within the city. It's not the RENA number. It's the RENA number times two or times three. There's no real cap on this and what's gonna happen. So as you're thinking about this impact to the city, which we will know once we get into the environmental report, but think about the traffic that's gonna come. We've got a million three, and if we're gonna be doubling, all the cities are averaging, and they're gonna be doubling like Newport is, that 4,800 number, and it's gonna be 9,119 or 9,200 now, as the city is saying? Well, that, all the other cities are gonna be doing that. So the traffic from 9,000 units, well, you look at Irvine's number, 14,000. Or you look at Southern California, they had a million three. All of a sudden, it's 2,006, and the traffic from 2,006 units, and what is that going to do to the city's circulation system? It used to be, and maybe we have the current census numbers now, but it used to be in 2010 census, we had 11 million people coming to visit Newport Beach. I'm sure it's much higher than that now. And with these doubling of things, our circulation element, we're like Pacific Coast Highway in this 2510 project, it's gonna get wider. We're gonna have three feet of frontage if you approve this project tonight, once the coast highway is widened. And here, we're gonna have this general plan, and it's gonna study circulation, and we're gonna have to consider this cumulative traffic impact on Newport Beach. And we may say we have to widen coast highway even wider than the general plan is, because RENA isn't anticipated in our general plan. You know, we had five units last time, not 4,800, which would really be the double, but potential of 10,000 or 20,000. So I want the council to start thinking about the cumulative effect, and what's that, what effect that is going to have on your decisions right now, because I'm one that thinks you ought to know these effects before you're starting to approve any projects that could in any way impact our regional circulation system, which affects our ability to do emergency evacuations. And heaven forbid that we never have one, but if we do, like Santa Monica did, or like Paradise did in 2018, those agreements failed. The ability of the city failed. So I bought as much time as I can, and I hope our speaker is here, and thank you very much for the opportunity to give my comments.
Next speaker, please.
I'll use the moment for a non-agenda item. Sandra Ayers. I was asked, actually, by another resident to come and make this statement, so I'll use the time. And I think it's obvious with one of our council members out because of the health situation, this older person said they couldn't come tonight. They'd like to attend, but they couldn't because of the vulnerability issue for them with, you know, COVID going on, and even to be exposed to the flu at this vulnerable time for everyone is dangerous. So they would really appreciate if you would consider reopening things to the call-in time for people to call in, if they can't visit. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Non-agenda items?
My name is Kristen West, and I spoke at your last meeting, and three minutes just doesn't seem to be enough to talk about everything that I'd like to speak on, but I just was wondering if anyone has ever heard of the Aztec civilization? And how did they die out again? Was it complacency? When everyone pretends that there's not a big white elephant in the living room, we are in big trouble. Elected officials are counted on to make healthy decisions for their people, and we put trust in you to take a stance on anything that threatens our lives. And if you don't, there's no point to any government. Electrical pollution is killing us slowly, and no one has stood up to protect us. And we, the people, want to know why. These tin and wooden posts are going up, right and left, and they're, it's happening at night when the citizens are asleep. We don't know they're going up, and then the next day, suddenly, there's new electrical things coming up in front of us. So, there's a lot of damage going on, a lot of neurological damage to our prefrontal cortex and back here in the back of our brain. And there's also other health issues like cancer. And I just want to know why the electrical pollution, why there's so much of it, and why there isn't anyone regulating this, why there aren't laws regulating it, and who's putting it up and why are they putting it all up? I understand you want to make the city look beautiful, but health comes before beauty. We can redefine our families as smart families by going down to maybe one phone and one computer per family is a recommendation that I have. Our world is out of balance, and for all the electrical lines that are going up, it requires wooden poles to go up, which takes away from the trees and the oxygen that we have. Takes a long time to grow a tree. So, basically, I guess the overabundance of electricity is heating up our planet, too. So, I just want to know, like, who is regulating our electricity and why they're allowing that to happen? And I think that's all. I think that's all I have to say. Whoop, let me see. Yeah, I just, I think we need new laws regarding the regulation of EMFs, so we know how much radiation that we're getting in our bodies. Because I know where I live, on San Joaquin, there's a huge, there's a lot of poles that are up there, and I feel the electricity, I feel my hands tingling, I feel the back of my head. And they're starting to come up with different clothing on the internet. This is becoming a huge thing on the internet. If you start looking at it, you can find a lot of different science articles regarding that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have any other speakers for non-agenda items? All right. Seeing none, move on to item 12, Resolution Number 2021-70, Call for Review of Planning Commissioner's Approval of Mixed-Use Project at 2510 West Coast Highway. Do any council members have any conflicts regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I do. I have a conflict of business directly across the street.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have both a real property and business interest in this matter.
You lucky guys, you.
All right. We have a report.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor Avery. Simone Jurges with the Community Development Department. Before I hand it over to staff, just want to kind of just follow up a little brief overview. So, the last time we met about this project, this is the project at 2510 West Coast Highway, was on April 27th, 2021, and at that time, we presented a proposed project for that site. Since that time, and at that time, the council decided to continue the item. The applicant, since the April 27th hearing, has redesigned the project and what we believe to be a better project. Tonight's item is going to be that redesigned project. As a reminder for city council, SB 330 kind of handcuffs cities on public, number of public hearings to five public hearings, and tonight is the fourth public hearing out of the five. So, I just want to provide that little reminder for the city council. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Principal Planner Matthew Schneider and Deputy Director Jim Campbell. Matt will go ahead and make that presentation, and then we can answer any questions afterwards. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Avery, council members. Thank you for that introduction, Simone. As indicated, this is a continuation from the April 27th meeting, the call for review of this project. There have been a number of substantial project changes in result to feedback, both from the council and the community at large. The architectural style has been reimagined, the boutique auto use has been eliminated, the commercial space has been substantially reduced. The project no longer requires or requests any parking waivers or requires a conditional use permit. One residential unit has been added, and there is a dedication provided along Avon Street. And all these details, I'll touch on further in my presentation. In terms of the project, the overall square footage is slightly under 40,000 square feet. The commercial component consists of 5,096 square feet, is a one-story structure. The residential is three stories comprised of a 65-space parking spot or parking lot on the first story with two stories of residential above, each with 18 residential units. Three of those units would be designated as affordable workforce housing. Here's a site plan, provides a bird eye view of the project site. The area highlighted in yellow is the residential component, is a single structure. The project has been elongated, so the residential component comes further towards West Coast Highway. It's also been articulated on the side property lines. The commercial component, again, attached to the residential structure, has been reduced in size, and it's shifted to the east side of the property. Driveway and parking access is provided both off of West Coast Highway and Avon Street. The council may recall, the previous design, the residential component ran from side property line to side property line. With the revised project and the way that it's been oriented and articulated, there are two open areas on the side of the property which are now utilized as common and private open space. Here's a rendering. This is the perspective from West Coast Highway. The architecture's been described as nautilus or Nantucket style. Again, the residential component has been shifted to the east side of the property and reduced in size. Another perspective, a different angle from West Coast Highway. And then the Avon Street frontage, and this is viewing towards the residential component of the property. Materials include a variety of wood, metal and glass. The project will be sided with wood siding, a metal roof, uses a neutral color palette with contrasting colors. I should note that a previous material description distributed with the project referred to the siding as a fiber cement. I clarified with the applicant earlier today, it is, in fact, a wood siding as depicted in this slide. The project has a 65-space parking lot that's shared between both the office and residential use. The office use has 21 spaces, which meets the city's requirement of one space per 250 square feet. There are five, excuse me, four parking spaces on the exterior oriented closer to West Coast Highway. The remaining parking spaces are on the lowest level, the residential portion of the structure. The residence provides, or the parking provides 44 residential spaces, 39 are required, and that's per state density bonus law prescribes those parking ratios. It results in a five-space parking surplus. In addition to that, the 21 office spaces would be available outside of business hours to residents. There's an elevation, this is looking at Avon Street frontage. Maximum building height from this vantage is 34.6 feet. The West Coast Highway frontage, the residential component is at 35 feet. The commercial has been reduced from approximately 32 feet with the previous project to 23.2 Side elevations, the east elevation on the top of this slide is from the vantage point if you were looking towards Tustin Avenue. Again, maximum height of 35 feet. The west elevation is the opposing view. This project is eligible for a density bonus. The project is allowed to have 26 base units, and with the density bonus, nine additional units are allowed for a total of 36 units. Three of those units will be rent-restricted for a minimum of 55 years for families that are very low-income. Density bonus also allows the project two incentives or concessions and one waiver. The incentive, the first incentive is related to the floor area, the commercial space, .25 is required in terms of a floor area ratio, and the project is providing 11.9%. The second incentive relates to the residential setback from West Coast Highway, where 100 feet is required for the setback for the residential portion, and it is proposed at approximately 40 feet. The project also has a requested development standard waiver, which would allow a maximum height of 35 feet. There's a tentative parcel map associated with the project. There are five underlying parcels. They are going to be consolidated into a single lot, highlighted in red. There's also an existing access easement that'll be carried forward under the map to Avon There's a new dedication area proposed in the updated project. This is on the Avon Street frontage, and the intent is to facilitate the widening of Avon Street. The dedication is depicted in blue hashed lines. It would be 12 feet on the eastern property line and transition to 26 feet on the western property line. View simulations have been provided. These are taken from John Wayne Park. The proposed project is shown on the upper portion of the slide, I'm sorry, the previous project with the proposed project in the lower portion of the slide. With the articulation in the updated design and the reduced height of the commercial portion, there is improved views along the eastern side of the building. Here's a closer view. The building has been outlined in, highlighted in red and provided in a transparent fashion so you can see through and what exists beyond. There is a small portion of water view that is impacted. However, the overall view of the harbor, Lido Island and beyond remains intact. The city's traffic phasing ordinance is the standard which we utilize for development projects such as this. Projects that generate up to 300 average daily trips are exempt from the traffic, from completing a traffic study and the provisions of the traffic phasing ordinance. This project has been estimated to generate 292 average daily trips. For comparison purposes, the previous version of the project was 295 trips. The project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act. Let's do the fact that at least two-thirds of the project's square footage are designated as residential use. This means the city is required to follow specific procedures and required to make specific findings to deny or reduce the density of the project. It's also important to note that the Housing Accountability Act does not relieve the project from complying with the California Coastal Act. We heard concerns about the coastal appeal jurisdiction at the previous meeting. Staff did coordinate with our counterparts at Coastal Commission staff, discussed the city's permit and appeal jurisdiction map, which is the tool used to determine whether project lies within the appeal area or not, and Coastal Commission staff concurred, based on the map, it is not within the appeal area. They did also mention that they received some phone calls from interested stakeholders, and they've advised them of the Coastal Commission's formal procedure if they wanted to do a formal determination from the Coastal Commission. The project did undergo SEQA review. It does qualify for a Class 32 infill development exemption. The project's air quality and greenhouse gas assessment study, noise study and preliminary water quality plan all did not identify any significant impacts. Staff is recommending that the council conduct a public hearing, that they find the project exempt from SEQA and adopt Resolution 2021-70 approving the project. I should note, there was a memo distributed yesterday that related to revising three conditions of approval, conditions 66, 67 and 68. They're all related to the dedication along Avon Street that I previously mentioned. The conditions, as distributed in your staff report packets, referred to the dedication area as a fixed 20 feet. It's been revised to read that it'll be from 12 transitioning to 26 feet from the eastern to western property line. I should also clarify that condition number 67, the intent of this condition is that the applicant design and construct the street widening for the portion of the street directly in front of their project site. And so, staff have recommend we clarify that, that this is for the project frontage only. That concludes the presentation. Our traffic engineer is present this evening as well, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, this is Will.
Please go ahead.
Mr. City Attorney, at about 4:45, we received an email from, it appeared to be the attorneys for the Coalition to Protect Mariners Mile. Have you had a chance to look at that letter?
I think Mr. Harp is, is he in the conference room?
Would you mind repeating the question?
Sure. It appeared that around 4:45, we received an email with a 14-page letter from council for the Coalition to Protect Mariners Mile, and I'm wondering if you've had a chance to review that letter?
I have, I have reviewed that letter.
Just from a strictly legal standpoint, does it change any of the recommendations that we would be receiving in the staff report?
Based on my reading of it, I don't think so. You know, the biggest issue that I saw in that letter is maybe confusion between what's required under the density bonus law and what's required under the Housing Accountability Act. Seems like there may have been some confusion there, but based on my reading of the letter, I don't think that changes anything as far as the council's ability to move forward this evening.
Okay, so, one of the things we're going to talk about tonight, I imagine, is the state laws mandating certain findings or at least requiring us to make certain findings. When you say that there's a confusion in the density bonus versus the Housing Accountability Act, what are you, what are you referencing there?
There were a fair amount of references to the development standards concessions, and those have come under the density bonus law as opposed to the Housing Accountability Act. And I think there may have been some confusion about where those concessions came from. That's what I was referring to.
Okay. All right. I may have some more questions about that later, but I wanted to make sure you'd had a chance to review it, because I had reviewed it and I wanted to make sure that, that we were receiving recommendations from you. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have any other comment from council? All right. Seeing none, I'll open it up and hear public comments on this item. Do we have folks here representing the proponent, or, here we go.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, Sean Matzler with Cox Castle, on behalf of the applicant. Can we pull up the PowerPoint?
Sean, how much time do you think you're going to need?
Less than 10 minutes.
Okay. Okay, and if you want to address any of the legal issues that are raised in the letters that were submitted, we'd appreciate that as well.
Sure. Quick PowerPoint for you. I really wanted to focus the PowerPoint tonight just on the changes that have been made since April 27th. So we're not going to... Quick 10 minutes, Aaron. So, we're not going to go through some of the legal arguments that I made in the past or the SEQA issues. I just wanted to talk about the project changes and illustrate some of those for the council. So really, this is the list of what we've been working on for the past three months. Incorporating nautical architecture into the project. The addition of authentic building materials instead of synthetic. Improving the view from John Wayne Park. Increasing the side setbacks and creating additional articulation in the building. Reducing the size of the commercial building. Providing code compliant parking. And then dedicating a piece of land on Avon, as staff just mentioned, in order to facilitate maybe a future widening. And these were all responses to concerns that we heard from the community and from this council in April. So here we have a before and after of the coast highway frontage of the project. The prior is on top, incorporates sort of a contemporary design. On the bottom is the proposed project, which is very reminiscent of Lido House Hotel. We know that the architecture of Lido House has been received favorably in town and we just emulated that. And so you'll see varying materials, lighthouse elements, board and batten siding, natural materials. We think it looks great. Again, before and after of the Avon frontage. Similar features on the Avon frontage, so it's got, I think, a very pleasing aesthetic from both sides. Views from John Wayne Park. Just to refresh, we had our visual simulation consultant who's here tonight to answer questions if anybody has any. He prepared view simulations from three locations at John Wayne Park. Those are numbered one, two and three on this slide. Number one is the lowest and then two and three going up. So here we have view number one and later on I'll focus in a little tighter so you can see exactly the area that covers a closer view of the bottom image. On the top, you'll have the prior project from this view perspective. The middle is the current project. And on the bottom, what we did in order to sort of illustrate the outline of the current project is to sort of make it opaque and draw a red line about it so it was as clear as we could make it, the area that would be covered by the proposed project. Here we have view two, which just moved slightly up from that view number one. In view number one, there is a slight impingement of the bay view between two buildings. There's no such impact in view two. Nor is there any impact in view three. View three, recall, is from sort of the grassy park area that's closest to Cliff Drive Park. I'm going to skip ahead a couple because I did this out of order, but I wanted to give you... This is a close-up view of each of those again. So again, view one, this is the lowest point. You can see what we did here in terms of a redesign and I'll illustrate this in a second how we did it architecturally. But on the left of this image, we dropped the building down so that we kept as much of that view as possible. And the prior version of the project was sort of a boxy aesthetic that covered, it was more of a straight line across from property line to property line. So again, this is view one, the lowest view. View two, there's no water impacted. And again, view three, no water impacted. I'm going to scroll back a couple here. Going back to sort of the original list, one of the other changes we made was to incorporate authentic building materials and this is wood siding, brick pavers, trellises. All this is outlined in the recent middle package from our architect. But we heard loud and clear that that was something that was desired in terms of build quality by this council. We also increased the site setbacks for two reasons. One, we think it makes it a more interesting project. And two, it enables us to have that view corridor that I pointed out on the left of the prior picture. So here we have a before and after. On my left anyway, you'll have the before image, which is again a more boxy design. And on the right, you'll see the new design, which is a single corridor with residential units on either side and it kind of wraps around and the commercial building is on the bottom left of that image. What that allows us to do in these side setback areas is to program them with open space. You'll recall, the original design had a roof deck above the commercial area that was close to Coast Highway. So we've removed that and what we have now instead are these two side decks. So these are residential amenity areas that are landscaped and improved with hardscape and other tenant amenities. And we have our landscape architect here tonight if you're curious about any of the programming or the landscaping here. I'm going to skip through these, which you've already seen. We also reduced the commercial use, as staff mentioned in the staff report. We use the density bonus law concession or incentive in order to request relief from the minimum .25 FAR required under the code. And so what we did was instead of having an 11,000 square foot boutique auto showroom, we now have a 5,000 square foot office building. We'd also heard at the last council meeting that there was concern about narrowing the use of the commercial to something as specific as a boutique auto showroom and parking it as such. And so the proposed project as exists tonight is a general office and it's parked as a general office and we feel like there's a robust demand for that in the area. We've parked the project to code as originally proposed. At the last meeting, you'll recall, we were requesting a CUP for a parking waiver. That project had 58 parking spaces for its 35 units and 11,000 square feet of commercial. We've upped that to 65 parking spaces. We have one more residential unit. We have less than half the amount of commercial. This means that the project is parked to code and that we have five surplus parking spaces on site which could be used by the commercial or the residential guests. The commercial parking is also going to be available to the residences and the residential guests when the office building is closed. And finally, the Avon dedication. So this was illustrated in the staff report. And so this is the current depiction of the Avon dedication or the Avon area where you have parking that's sort of downhill on the Tustin side. And so what we've done here is in order to facilitate a future widening of Avon, which would be a future city project, we have agreed to dedicate a portion of our project's Avon frontage to allow for a future widening and we think it could accommodate the relocation of the parking spaces toward the uphill side closest to Tustin, the Tustin Homes, which we think improves the flow of that intersection. For those who've driven the area, it's sort of a five-way intersection and this realignment better aligns the two sides of Avon across Tustin. This is what the sort of the Avon widened Avon could look like in an ultimate condition if the properties to the east of ours were also to dedicate land along Avon. And that's the end of the presentation. Here tonight with me is the applicant, Mark Machady, myself, we have the architects, landscape design team and the visual simulation consultant. And then I'll just close. Aaron did ask me if I wanted to address any of the comments. I did review, there was two letters that came in recently. One from David Tanner, the second from the applicant's attorney. I've reviewed them. I'm comfortable with where we stand. I'm comfortable that staff's done an excellent job with this project and that it's fully defensible. The only correction, I want to reiterate what Mr. Schneider said, was the small tweak to condition number 67, which was to clarify that the proposed dedication and the applicant's offer to widen and design and improve Avon only extends to his frontage. It is not the entire Avon frontage. And that would be, a broader Avon project would be the subject of a future public works application. So...
And just briefly, there was a couple of issues raised regarding the use of the Class 32 exemption and then the widening of Avon. Could you just touch on the SEQA issues that were raised?
Sure. So the project relies on a Class 32 exemption from SEQA. We had our environmental consultant, Urban Crossroads, re-review the appropriateness of that exemption based on the redesign of the project. As proposed, the residential floor area is about 400 square feet more than what was proposed last time around, but we've lost about 6,000 square feet of commercial floor area. So net, it's a much smaller project and there's a letter in the record from Urban Crossroads that concludes that the Class 32 exemption remains appropriate. With respect specifically to the Avon frontage, there was an allegation in the letter from the Coalition's attorney that said that we would need to analyze the full buildout of Avon under SEQA, which is not correct any more than we would need to analyze the full buildout of Coast Highway because we have a Coast Highway dedication. That's just simply not how it works. So we're comfortable with where we are on that from a SEQA perspective. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So do we have any comment from the Coalition?
Good evening, I'm Deborah Rosenthal. I do have a little outline of my presentation. Otherwise, this is to keep me in check. Otherwise, I have a tendency to start talking and not... Oh, let me give you some more. This is not, I'm Deborah Rosenthal representing the Coalition to Protect Mariners Mile. This is not what is generally considered a strong introduction, but I have to apologize that I was out of town on vacation last week. I've been catching up. That's why it's not my practice to send letters in at the last moment. But I wound up behind the eight ball on some of these issues. And I apologize also to the council members who are not here. Because of being out of town, this is what I have to refer to as an old-school way of handling a presentation because I couldn't get the PowerPoint done in time. So it may bring you back to earlier days. I would like to say that I had a very pleasant conversation with Mr. Matzler while they were in the process of doing some redesign of the property. And I had hoped that I would be able to be here supporting the new proposal. There are improvements in the proposal, but unfortunately, the design changes have to do with some of the visual impacts and with attempting to reduce the impacts to water views. There still are important issues and impacts that have to do with the fact that this project does not contribute to the community's vision of Mariners Mile. It is, the pictures of it show that there's an office use and a driveway that front on West Coast Highway. That's not the vibrant village neighborhood and visitors serving kind of commercial use that was intended by the city, we believe, the community believes, in the local coastal plan, the general plan and the vision plan. So not only does it fail to contribute to the development of Mariners Mile, sets a poor precedent for future proposals, but the access from the rear of the property continues to be extremely problematic. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Housing Accountability Act and as Mr. Harp mentioned, the density bonus law. There hasn't been much discussion about the fact that this property is five parcels and that the city is being asked to turn this into one parcel. The reason for doing that is to max, it's not required by law. It's to maximize the number of housing units. And the result of that is that the city winds up with an office building and essentially a completely unrelated housing project on the same parcel. The office building, under certain circumstances, can be rented, but it can't be sold. It's entirely unclear what the financial relationship will be between the two buildings. And it's quite unusual and generally a poor idea to have two distinctly separate uses on a single parcel. And so we would like to recommend that the council look seriously at whether it wants to have a single parcel to maximize housing units with two unrelated uses on the same parcel. The Housing Affordability Act, the density bonus law, do not require the city to approve a merger or parcel map of this kind. They don't exempt parcel maps from going through normal procedures. And the Housing Affordability Act and the density bonus law are really intended to address density, the number of units and excessive construction requirements. Unreasonable, I know the city of Newport Beach would never do this, but there are some cities that have been known to impose excessive construction requirements that raise the cost of affordable housing. Those are the issues that these two acts are intended to address. So we want to talk about the fact that the parcel map is not required to be approved and we believe that the city cannot make the finding that having a general office use with half the frontage used for access as compliant with the general plan.
Ms. Rosenthal, how much time do you need?
I would say I'm about halfway done, so maybe another five minutes?
Okay, thank you.
All right, I will... Don't encourage me to talk faster. I've been known to... I can't, I am happy to answer any questions. We also, the... So we have the question of the parcel map and turning this into a single lot, which reduces future flexibility because you're going to have, there are going to be market changes that affect office and residential differently. And the vision of the community was actually for a more active neighborhood serving use. Now, in terms of concessions, I have to say that there's not a lot of law yet on the question of concessions and incentives. I did, if you're interested, I did bring up the definition of concessions and incentives in the state law. But we believe very strongly that the city cannot approve a change essentially in its general plan requirements that were intended to facilitate commercial development along Mariners Mile through concessions. The concessions, as a matter of fact, at many places, state law requires that if a concession, a waiver or an incentive is required, the applicant needs to be able to show that that will reduce construction and our operational costs in a way that makes it possible to... it possible to make affordable housing available. That makes it possible to have, in this case, it's only three units of affordable housing out of a 36-unit project, but the waivers and the concessions need to support affordable housing. And in this particular case, although the community does not object to a reduction in the square footage requirement for commercial along Mariner's Mile, we believe that it should be done according to the normal procedures, that this is a significant change in the vision for this area and sets a precedent, and that it ought to go through the...and without evidence that it is necessary to reduce costs, it needs to go through normal requirements. And even if that evidence is available, which we haven't seen, it would also need to go through normal requirements. We...so there's a height waiver, a setback waiver, and the commercial use reduction. And each of these needs to contribute to making this project financially able to support the affordable housing. We haven't seen anything except what sort of vague hand-waving on that issue. And we think the community is entitled to know that if its rules are being modified, there is a reason for that. We also think, and I understand from some of the comments this evening, that not everyone agrees with us, that additional traffic and view studies are required. As was stated, the prior project, which was 35 units and a boutique auto showroom with essentially no traffic, generated 295 units, 295 daily trips. Frankly, it is unbelievable to us that adding a unit, when most of these units are seven or eight trips per day, plus converting from a essentially no-traffic showroom to an office would result in fewer trips. It seems to us that if you start with the 295 trips and you add a unit, you are over 300 trips by definition. I'd also say, I was out on the site yesterday, and I was looking from sort of the panorama view and was concerned about what I think is sometimes called "death by a thousand cuts" or "nibble to death by ducks." I'm sure there are other phrases as well, where as each project comes in and says, "This is just a tiny little impact," at the end of the day, as Mariner's Mile redevelops the way the city wants it to redevelop, there's going to be nothing left of the water views. And the city has an opportunity that is unlikely to be repeated, to say that those water views are important and that it wants to set a precedent. And the height waiver that is requested, we believe, has not been fully justified financially and that the three-story building is very problematic, even though there's a change and elongation of the design. I'd also say, in terms of Avon construction, I had some trouble apparently finding the conditions of approval on the city's website. Avon, the rule on CEQA review is that if the city approves something that commits the public agency to a particular course of action, then the entire impacts of that course of action need to be evaluated under CEQA. And in this particular case, we believe that widening Avon, moving the parking, is committing the city to a certain...to having Avon become essentially an access, an important access road. We also want to make sure that office construction, although we don't think office, this is a good place for office, is linked in terms of timing to the residential development. And finally, listening to the news these days, we hear a lot about transparency. And the community group, the Coalition and other groups have been asking for months that story polls be erected to show, in fact, not a computer simulation, the height of this project and what the impacts will be. And the fact that something as easy and commonly done across Southern California's story polls have been refused fuels the suspicion of the community that this is a project that is designed to maximize a...take advantage of a hot housing market without consideration for either the future of Mariner's Mile or the interest of the community. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do think that the city is not in a position to make a decision tonight until it's looked at traffic impacts because this is a significant change in the project to Avon widened and cumulative view impacts. And we also think that the city has an opportunity to look at the parcelization, winding up with a single large parcel, and that deserves more study as well. There are other speakers representing themselves as members of the Coalition. We're all happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right. So, next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Jim Carlson. Could you bring my slide up, please?
So these are three-minute comment periods for individuals.
Right, we'll try to do it in three minutes. Yes, please. All right, wait. So we did our own view simulation. It's very similar to the one that they showed but wasn't shown before, but this site is so unique from the standpoint that you can go to different spots. This park goes all the way down to the street, which blocks views. This is from the lower park bench area, and it's all different like that. So basically, the applicant's view simulations were taken basically from the best view-vantage points that show the least impacts from John Wayne Park. They also don't include elevator shafts that the city staff should be included in the last meeting. If you were to go to...we just saw that. The reason we asked for story polls is because of the unique aspect of this park and the views. The applicant refused to erect story polls. Why? They knew that the people who would be...that the people would be overwhelmed by the views that they now take for granted would be destroyed forever with construction of this project. You can take a bite out of the apple and still have an apple. If you take numerous bites out of the apple, you don't have an apple. So that's referring to John Wayne Park. The other thing that I saw from their presentation about the widening of Avon, it's totally nonsense to put parking up against the residential areas on the other side of Avon. That's the first we've seen of that, and we don't care for that at all. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have some slides, if you could put them up. I want to remind everybody here that the official website of the city designates, I think, eight or nine villages, and that it's a commitment and a policy of the city to further the development of these villages. Secondly, this was an issue in the last election, the issue of linking the villages and making the villages for all use. And thirdly, during the COVID situation, it was unbelievable the number of people that are using the villages and the beaches. And just ask Stacy Bone on Riverside. Okay. My first point is, there is a recognition by the Planning Commission, as stated on the February 18 meeting, that there is a need for a Mariner's Mile plan. Totally recognized. Secondly, we absolutely agree with that and that it simply makes no sense to...it makes sense to adequately plan for the development of such a visible and important part of our city. I don't see any consistency with this building and this project with the general plan and the vision for Mariner's Mile, as was been articulated on the site and throughout the last 15, 20 years. Thirdly, Mayor Avery agreed that we do not...we do have to do a better job from the beginning of planning. This project was not planned with a village in mind, and I don't think you'll find any disagreement on that. Next slide, please. Secondly, Mark Moschetti and his team sponsored a community meeting back on the 2nd of February to discuss the proposed project. The meeting did address the design and the style, et cetera, of the building, but they did not present the entire Moschetti family vision for Mariner's Mile. No one knows that. It's an unanswered question. However, when asking about this project, there was a formal request made to the City Department for a community outreach program. This was denied without explanation. What's very interesting, in the meeting with Mark Moschetti and Sean and his team, or maybe an hour and a half to two, it was a video conference, that's the only exposure everybody in Newport Beach, the community surrounding Mariner's Mile, have seen on this project. There's been no community outreach. And I implore the City Council to sponsor a city outreach to get this plan to the citizens of the city and that the City Planning Department and the staff explain the basis of the criteria, the elements of their findings, and why they recommended approval, because it is an unknown. I think you could ask anybody in this room, how did the city go about deciding that they're making their decision and the recommendation is council? I don't think anybody knows that. Maybe the city knows. I'm not sure even if the council knows all the details that are involved, but certainly the people don't. Next slide, please. This sets an unfavorable precedent for the character size and density of PCH. I think responding to the concerns, the developer has made some changes, and I think they are very worthwhile and very desirable changes, and it's more consistent with other changes that have been made. But if we don't know the whole land use of all these projects by the Moschetti family represents approximately over one-third of all Mariner's Mile land use, we've got to get it right. Can I give a few more minutes?
Yes.
Okay, please, go on. Next slide. Okay. I was at the last...your last meeting, I think if you look at the record, you're going to find there was an enormous amount of community input on this, and the density of the project was high in the list, oversize in the structure of the lot, incompatibility of design, which is improving, and all factors negatively affecting the surrounding areas, many of which, as we've seen tonight in the comments that have been made, haven't been addressed. What's the interesting is, there has not been one comment of anybody on Mariner's Mile, any business on Mariner's Mile, that has been in favor of this project. So I don't know where you think that the people in this community think this project's a good idea. Next slide. The city's gone through a process and has a track record of success. There's no question about it. Okay? That was not applied on this project. If you look at what happened at Lido Marine Village, the outreach, the conceptual areas, the areas coming together, all the neighbors around there were brought into the process. It took a period of time. There were design guidelines that were agreed upon in the community before one structure was built, including what the city holidayed. So the goal...so we have a proven success. You can do it. It's been done. It's even done for the Orange City College site, which is a very nice site, okay? But to enhance the character and charm of the community, and so that is what the city wants, that's what the city's public policy and your website requires of the villages in Newport. Next slide. So we think that there should be a master mile plan, the form for master mile, and you should form a steering committee made up of all the community stakeholders. To do so otherwise, I think, is very short-sighted, and some may consider it to be irresponsible. Lastly, you have to postpone this project until we know all the projects, until the Moschetti family provides us with a vision that they have for Mariner's Mile and how their vision complies with a village concept that is on the website and which is the stated policy of this city. I don't think you can go any further. I cannot make a decision to buy a car on the information, let alone Mariner's Mile. So I think, and you have to let the city and the planning, the highway department and the engineer and the traffic engineer tell us. No one knows what's going to happen in terms of road safety, road widening, and infrastructure projects on Mariner's Mile. So we don't...there's...it's not...you can't go anywhere and find any documents that tie all this together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jurges, could I ask you a question? Given the zoning of this area, what are constraints in terms of what can be developed there?
Let me turn to the deputy director, Mr. Campbell. He's a little bit more familiar with the zoning there.
Thank you for the question. You know, within this particular area, it is designated mixed use. I think some of us said it was visitors-serving commercial. It's not. Mixed use allows for residential development and commercial development on a single parcel. I apologize. Get a little closer to the mic here. The site is designated for mixed use by the general plan and the local coastal program, as I indicated. It allows for commercial development of up to .5 FAR. There is a minimum FAR that the applicant is seeking a development standards waiver for, and all of the concessions and development standard waivers are mentioned in the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, which is Exhibit B to the report. But the project is consistent with the general plan designation, so this is the type of projects that we anticipated within the general plan.
And I think this zoning occurred prior to the sale of the Ardell property, probably about 2006. Would that make sense?
The general plan with this mixed use designation was created in 2006 with the general plan update. The waterfront parcels have a different general plan designation and therefore a different zoning than in the parcel that's subject here tonight. The zoning for these...for that parcel, or the subject parcel, excuse me, was created in 2010, and it matches very closely what the general plan envisions.
So, and able to look at the whole thing, the whole project now, the whole site, if you will, of all the Moschetti properties, what latitude do we have to go in and sort of create a village with less density, less height, all the rest of it?
I think what would have to happen there is we have to, as a community, come together and develop a different vision for Mariner's Mile and then start the process to update the general plan and then the zoning that would follow. The city has always moved forward with projects consistent with this general plan. We've never stopped the processing of a project if the community wants to change the vision through the amendment process. So, you know, the applicant has put forward this project consistent with the existing general plan and zoning, and we feel duty-bound to bring it forward for a decision, hence why we're here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
David Tanner, Newport Beach resident, here tonight to... David Tanner, Newport Beach resident, here tonight to talk to you. In addition to the comments that I submitted today, sorry they were submitted late, but we only had a few days to review the project plans. City website was down partially over the weekend, so you got extensive comments from me today. Hopefully, you had a chance to read them. I want to give you my sense of where you're at, and my recommendation for what this council might consider doing to get out of this predicament that you find yourself in. The way I see it, you have a project designed the residents don't support. You have a project applicant that's threatening to sue the city if you don't act. You have residents threatening to sue the city if you do act to approve the project as proposed. You have residents saying, I'm one of them, that if you approve the project as proposed, it will be appealed to the Coastal Commission. I got a pretty good record of success at doing that. You have the state that's mandating massive increases in housing and limiting your city's ability and other cities' ability, their land use powers. The city is updating its housing element, and as you know, that's not going very smoothly. There's huge problems with that.
Tell us what we don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, hopefully, all these things you're going to agree with that I'm saying. The general plan update includes the circulation element, and as I spoke on the off agenda item, there's going to be massive circulation impacts.
Understand that, too.
Yeah, you understand that. The state is in a drought. We perhaps are in the worst year of the state's history. That's created a severe fire hazard, and that leads for the potential for a wildland urban fire, such as Santa Monica and Paradise Fire in 2018, where cities were -- those cities were unable to do an emergency evacuation on short notice, and this city faces similar circumstances to that. So what are you going to do? What are you supposed to do facing all of these challenges that you have with this project that is being -- you're pressured to approve tonight? What I would do, if I was a member of the City Council, is clear. There'd be no question. I would first act to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. I would hear this project after the general plan update, after I knew the environmental consequences facing the city from new housing regulations and their impact on circulation and emergency services. I would not be pressured into making a decision by anyone threatening litigation. There are a number of grounds to continue this project, to allow additional analysis, or to make a finding to deny the project without prejudice. If I were on the council, I would listen to the residents who elected me, who put me here. But now I have a proposal for you that I want you to consider. We've heard from staff that this is your next-to-last hearing. You've got to act soon. You've got one more hearing. So it seems to me that a lot of the questions you're being asked to resolve deal with Coastal Commission issues, coastal, local coastal plan compliance. The applicant is saying, I need the height. I can't go subterranean parking because it will make affordable housing unfeasible. You have affordable housing laws, state laws, that are being mandated on the city. You have Coastal Act where it says, protect coastal resources, protect views. It's very clear. It's objective standard in the local coastal program. Protect views. Why don't you take time and have the Coastal Commission decide these issues for you? Ask them. Table this item temporarily until the Coastal Commission comes back and addresses the coastal issues. You can then say, okay, there won't be an appeal, because there will be no need for an appeal, because the Coastal Commission will have determined this. Then you can say, okay, we now have these answers. Let's go forward with this project, at least in terms of the coastal issues. So you have some time. Why don't you ask the experts? Because otherwise, it's going to get appealed. That's going to take a year. It'll come back after the local -- the general plan is updated, but why don't you just have the Coastal Commission, ask them voluntarily, to address these concerns? The residents have them. There's conflicts in your policy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Bring up City Staff, Slide 14. Slide 14 from the staff report. Good day, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Charles Klob. I hadn't planned on commenting about this, but when this slide comes up, I do have something to say. I will be brief after that. Sorry, didn't mean to surprise you with that, but I got surprised by it. So, 26 and 9 is 35. I've seen nearly the same threatening letter from the applicant's attorney sent to the Planning Commission and to this council twice. He admonishes you that most -- you must approve this project because of HAA blah, blah, blah. I notice that that letter is still not posted on today's agenda for the public to sample the tone. I'm sure that's a misstep. In a recent social media post, Councilman O'Neill quoted an old saying in the legal world. Although the quote is sometimes attributed to the late Pulitzer Prize-winning American poet Carl Sandburg, I can also track a version of it to as far back as 1911. Quote, "If the facts are against you, argue the law. If the law is against you, argue the facts. And if the law and the facts are against you, pound the table and yell like hell." End quote. Tonight, the council is akin to a judge or jury. You can decide, based on input from the two sides, how to advance or modify this project. Neither side is automatically correct because of their standing as staff slash applicant or the residents. The city attorney has an opinion, but he is not the judge. The council often sides with the staff slash applicant when the residents are offering an emotional opposition. Tonight, if you read Resident David Tanner's comprehensive consolidation of the facts, and you had a chance to read Deborah Rosenthal's concise interpretation of the law, and you saw the applicant's attorney pound the table with his writing, you have enough information to make a sound ruling here. I pray that you do. There is a project here. It's help direct it to the right one. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I live on Tustin Hill. I'm appalled by what I hear. We have a tiny little community. Not only do we have residents who live on that hill, we have many, many people who exercise, runners, joggers, sprinters, two -- people with two legs, dogs with four legs. They skirt in and out of traffic in the day. There's no -- with parking on either side, only one car can go up, or one car can go down. I watch these brave people go around that hill multiple times. I wish I could do it. I see the easy ones taking the milder side, the tough ones going up Tustin. And now, we're going to add widening and alley, and we're going to bring in more cars. At the base of Tustin Hill, we have five intersecting, four streets and one alley, and these runners and joggers and skaters and sprinters have to go to the bottom and come around. And we're going to add more cars. So I have a suggestion. See a lot of suggestions here. Why? Why do we have to allow this project or any other project to even use Avon? Let them use PCH. Why can't we just block it so that -- we don't want the land, and we don't want to accommodate a single entrepreneur, so that we have to adjust our city to an entrepreneur? Rather, an entrepreneur should adjust to our city and our neighbors. We're not safe on that hill. The runners, joggers, sprinters, bikes, kids, they're not safe with more -- they're not safe now. We have no lights on the whole hill. We have no sidewalks. What do you want us to do? Let them go out PCH. Let's get an environmental impact study, and let's see the impact of this and any other project. I implore you to think about this, and I thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Avery, members of the council. Strange to be talking to only two, but such is life. My name is Jim Mosher. I think what you're seeing here tonight is an improvement over what you saw in April. There are a couple of things about it that confuse me. One is the building that we were told is now an office. The building -- maybe I'm misunderstanding what they mean by office. It doesn't look like an office to me. It looks like the equipment bay of a fire station, or maybe an enclosure for an indoor swimming pool. Whatever it is, I agree with Ms. Rosenthal. I thought the vision for Mariners Mile was not to have the street lined with office buildings, but to have it lined with visitor-serving, resident-serving, village kind of uses, not just office buildings, especially ones that look so strange as that. Second thing I'm confused about is, we were seeing here Slide 14. I'm confused about Slide 15, which is the one about the incentives and concessions and waivers that the applicant is asking for. First, we heard there's a reduction in floor area. We're told, I think it was going from .5 to .25. We heard there's a reduction in setbacks. Heard it's going from 100 feet to 40 feet. And then the third one is the one that confuses me. The project is eligible for a development standard waiver that, if applied, would physically preclude the development of the density bonus units, and the waiver requested is to allow a maximum height of 35 feet. The thing that confuses me is, there are some circumstances in which up to 40 feet are allowed in the shoreline height limitation area, and the staff did not say how much you're being asked to waive. So I'm wondering what they think without a waiver, what the height could be? Are they applying the mixed use standard or the residential standard? Where did we come up with the number? And how much is being reduced? And whatever it is, is the only condition that it physically precludes the development, because as other speakers have said, the building certainly could be lowered by lowering the parking, making it partially underground. That obviously would increase the expense, but it wouldn't physically preclude doing this. So I found this presentation of the height waiver extremely confusing, and hope we could get some clarity about that. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
We're back here tonight to review and discuss this project that will have significant and lasting impacts on our city. When citizens come to push back on developments, it is easy to attach labels like, they're the no people, the unreasonable, the deniers of reality. But just as easily, a perspective could be a concerned, dedicated community. Some might even use the word brave, because there are many who are afraid of the ramifications of this type of civic involvement. We've been involved as citizens since 1917, pushing back on the revitalization plan brought forth by the city. I'm not going to go over a lot of what was already said, but what I'm saying is that we care about Mariners Mile. Citizens care about Mariners Mile. We want revitalization about for Mariners Mile. We care about it. So we want revitalization. We want it to be a village. That's what you're hearing from everyone here. But we want it responsible. We don't want a Porsche dealership. We pushed on that. AutoNation, no thank you. Widening a PCH and making it dangerous for the safety of our children in the neighborhood, no thank you. I have a heart for this developer. What has not happened, and why we have this kind of discord going on this evening, is because we have not had leadership from the city staff, I'm sorry to say. It's been tabled on why we have not had a revitalization plan. Why did they table it in 2017? If we had it, the developer would have clear things going forward, you know, design, whatever, requirements. City -- citizens would have understood framework and know what they have negotiated for within legal requirements, and the city staff would then be able to easily give guidelines to all of these people. Why has it not happened? We had a great meeting with Mr. Selich, and it has, because of brave, committed, dedicated community, we got better architectural design. That wouldn't have happened if we hadn't been pushing back, right? So there's a reason why community involvement, community pushback, is important. Mr. Selich gave us great information. One terrific outcome was that we learned his involvement 20 years ago made a difference in Corona Del Mar. He led the revitalization of Corona Del Mar. He kept the PCH road to just four lanes, and he helped make it a pedestrian-friendly village. We asked Mr. Selich, please, come be part of this redevelopment issue effort and help Mariners Mile section of PCH be part of a village atmosphere like that. So we need you. The citizens need you, the council, with clear legal -- we've given you clear legal standing for not approving this project tonight. We've done what you've asked of us. We've given you facts showing our legal right to challenge this project. What we all want is to work together for the best outcome, for the city, for the developers, and for the current, and very importantly, future residents of Newport. We need the city staff to advocate for the residents' perspective as well as the developers' perspective. We need our city council to be leaders, along with all stakeholders, for this revitalization effort. And then we could all be yes people for the future of Mariners Mile. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Bill Dunlap, Snug Harbor Road. I'm just going to make a few comments. Everything's been pretty well discussed. I guess I want to refer to Mr. Masler's letter that I'm assuming all of you have read, even though it's not in the public domain right now. Have you all read it? Okay.
There are copies available of that letter.
Oh, there are? Okay. I was unaware of that. Anyway, within that letter, it kind of alludes to the fact that you guys don't have any authority in this, that it's a done deal. He basically states that if you don't approve this project, you're going to be sued. You don't have the authority over certain conditions of the planning and zoning. And I would just like to state that you are the arbitrators. It went through Planning Commission. Now it's to you. You are the people and authority that can make these decisions. So you can arbitrate whether it's consistent with planning and zoning. You are the ones that determine if is a specific adverse impact within this project. You will determine that, not anyone else, not an attorney, not the applicant. And you will decide what objective standards are to be met on this project. And one of those things that's been listed here is the SEQA exemption. I'm sure you're aware of the criteria for a SEQA exemption. The project and successive projects of the same type in the same place will not result in a cumulative impact. We discussed tonight that there's more projects coming, and I think we need to look at all of those collectively before we decide on this project. Also, there are no unusual circumstances creating the reasonable possibility of significant effects. The project will not result in damage to scenic resources. That has not been totally decided yet. We didn't get story polls, including but not limited to trees, historic buildings, rock outcroppings, and similar resources within an officially designated scenic highway. You have that authority as a city council to make those decisions, so I just ask you to do that. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Mr. Masler, would you like to make some comments based on what you've heard?
Good evening. Good evening, Sean Masler, on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Mayor, I wasn't planning to make any rebuttal comments. I understand the points made by the -- I mean, I can, if you'd like me to. I can address some of the legal issues. I'm very happy to. I have all the answers. I think you've heard a lot tonight. I will say this, nobody wants any lawsuits here. And I'll tell you what, in the last three months, the applicant's gone back and spent an enormous amount of effort and money, that he really didn't -- he didn't need to redesign the project completely. And if our goal was to come in here with the Housing Accountability Act as a club, If our goal was to come in here with the Housing Accountability Act as a club, we could have done that with a lot less architectural redesign work. But he lives in town. I live in town. Our kids go to school here. This is, we're not other people, right? Even though it sounds like that sometimes. And so we wanted to make a project that we could be proud of, right? As residents, and that we could come and show our kids that this is something that we built. I feel like that gets lost sometimes. So, anyway, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, if there are no further public comments, your last opportunity in this. We're going to take it back up to the dais here. So do we have any? Ms. Brenner, looks like you're ready to...
Well, I have a few questions. The parcel combination question, can Jim or Simone or someone talk about that and the precedents that lead to this being approved?
Thank you for the question, Ms. Brenner. The real reason for the parcel map is our subdivision code doesn't allow us to build buildings over property lines. And so given this design, you know, we need to eliminate the intervening property lines and create one parcel. So that's really the true reason behind it. I mean, the applicant could, you know, subdivide the property later to create condominiums and separate the commercial from the residential if they wanted to, but that's just not what the applicant's requesting today. So the real reason is simply just to not violate our subdivision code and build a building over the property line.
And this is not precedent-setting? This has been done in the past, or...?
I would say we haven't built a building over a property line without doing some sort of merger or a subdivision to eliminate that underlying property line for at least, at least 10 years or so. So this is the way the city does business. We don't have lot-tie agreements where you would just tie two properties together and build right over the property line. We don't do that anymore.
And can the city require that a Mariners Mile master plan be in place before further development occurs there?
That's also a really good question, and, you know, I think that would involve developing that plan and approving that plan, and then holding all development proposals at bay while that process goes forward. And that would likely involve some sort of moratorium. You know, I suppose the council could consider that, but, you know, the council, at least this previous councils have not considered any type of moratorium when we've been doing, you know, significant master plan developments.
How long would it take us to get a master plan approved for Mariners Mile?
Well, that's hard to say. It depends upon what the vision honestly is. I would likely envision needing at least a year to come up with something like that. Now, several years ago, the city did endeavor to put forward what we call the revitalization plan. So there's some, I guess, some preliminary work that was done, and that project was tabled. It was not adopted by the city council at that time. You know, I can't speak to all the reasons why, because, you know, I'm not a city council member. But, you know, obviously, we could use that as a starting point for going forward.
Okay. And our circulation element, where do we stand in that process? Because I just don't accept that there's going to be less than 300 trips generated by this project and future projects. And I don't think it's responsible for us to keep approving projects piecemeal without a circulation element that talks about... I have grandchildren that travel those streets of Newport Heights on their bikes to get to their schools. It's already out of control. And if we just say, "Well, there's only 300 more trips," then that's 300 more problematic trips because it's already a problem. So where does that stand, and how quickly can that be accelerated and really invite the public in and get a lot of feedback on that circulation plan?
You touched on a variety of different questions there. I'll just tackle the first with the circulation element. We are in the process of preparing a traffic study for the circulation element, and that's also in response to the housing element. So the development that's embodied in the draft housing element, we're evaluating that, the traffic impacts of that. So that modeling is being conducted right now, and will be part of the process going forward. We should have that available in September or October of this year. And that'll be looking at, you know, the full build-out of the general plan, of the existing housing that's embodied in the general plan, and then the additional housing on top of that to meet our arena needs. You also mentioned 300 trips, and that's really a threshold of our traffic phasing ordinance. So when a new development comes forward, we provide credit for the existing land uses and evaluate the trip increases for what's proposed. And the traffic engineer is here this evening, and the net increase of traffic for this project is less than 300 trips. And so pursuant to our traffic phasing ordinance, it wouldn't require an independent study to perform a level of service analysis on intersections.
How successful have we been in soliciting community input on the circulation element so far?
Well, we've conducted, I can't recall exactly how many public workshops that we've done. They were all done virtually by Zoom. We had anywhere from 30 to 40 to 50 people on an individual meeting. They were generally around about two hours. They were primarily focusing on changing and modifying and updating all the policies that are in the circulation element. The part of the circulation element that hasn't been completed at this point is really the results of that traffic analysis, the modeling that I mentioned. So we're looking at taking all the increases in housing that the housing element is suggesting, and then finding out what the impact of that is, and then comparing that back to our master plan of highways to see, do we need to make any changes at all? Do we need to widen the roadway? Do we need to expand an intersection to accommodate the anticipated traffic? Or are there other means of transportation mobility that can be embodied in the plan? We don't have the results of that yet because we haven't completed the modeling, and that should be completed here in the next couple of months.
So is Avon addressed in this circulation element?
I would say it's not really addressed because it's technically not a street. It's really an enhanced driveway that leads from Tustin Avenue to a city parking lot at the other end. It also provides access to the intervening parcels to the south, including the project site tonight. They have an easement granted for access purposes. And so there was the comment to, you know, cut that off somehow. They have access rights. And so, you know, the project does adhere to that. And, you know, the traffic engineer has looked carefully at the trip increases and where they would go, and he's here and available to testify if you've got any specific questions on traffic generation, or circulation, or design issues, if you will. I think he might be better, best to answer those questions.
Okay. On the coastal question that Dave Tanner brought up, do we have the flexibility of delaying this project until after this has been, questions have been answered by coastal? Is that something we could do?
I'm not entirely sure I understand Mr. Tanner's rationale for this. You know, I'm not sure his suggestion is even consistent with the city council's legislative platform, which is really to control our own destiny and make these decisions here locally. It seems as if he wants, you know, some form of development be evaluated in advance before the city council sees a project. I'm honestly not sure I understand his concept there. You know, they don't look at projects voluntarily like this. I mean, they do provide some modest amount of collaboration. So when staff has a question of consistency with the LCP or the Coastal Act, we reach out to their staff and ask for their opinion. At the end of the day, it's really a local decision when it's, when we have the jurisdiction to approve that coastal development permit.
It would just go through the process of an appeal to coastal if we approve it, and then that's how the coastal issues would be resolved?
Yes, indeed. We don't believe that this project would be subject to appeal. Obviously, some residents believe that it would be. You know, once a coastal development permit is acted upon by the city council, then, you know, those residents can seek a determination from the Coastal Commission. And if they find that it is within their appeal jurisdiction, then an appeal could be filed, and then the Coastal Commission would review the project.
One last question. Someone mentioned the SEQA exemption being dependent upon us looking at the collective impact is, tell us more about that.
Certainly. I'll make my attempt to do that. What I believe they're making a case to is that we really can't look at a SEQA exemption absent looking at the cumulative impacts of other projects in the area. When you're dealing with cumulative impacts, you're dealing with projects that are pending under review. We need to look at all of those at the same time, and we've evaluated that. We're really not supposed to look at other projects that potentially could be built under the existing zoning and general plan that aren't even proposed. And so it seems as if, you know, they, it seems as if there's some commentators who want us to evaluate this project in concert with other projects we aren't even on file. So, or some vision that the applicant's family has for the area. And we really can't accommodate that. That's not the purpose of SEQA.
Okay, thank you.
Could you make an assumption just based on the zoning and what the market's doing?
I don't think we can do a credible SEQA analysis, environmental analysis. Now, we did do a full EIR for the general plan back in 2006. And so, you know, the impacts that were identified in that EIR, the application of the policies that mitigate those impacts, and the results of that analysis, we carry that forward every time we do an exemption today. So we evaluate those impacts, look at the SEQA exemption, you know, look at whether the project is consistent with the general plan. And when it is, we feel we can make that infill exemption. It's a little complicated here because of the concessions and waivers that the state law basically requires us to evaluate and consider. Some of them are mandatory under certain circumstances, and we feel that those facts are in evidence for the relief that the applicant is proposing. As I mentioned earlier, that those are outlined in the Affordable Housing Implementation Plans attached to the staff report today. And so we feel that those are supportable today, and we do recommend their approval.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Okay, thank you. All right. I too have a number of questions. Mr. Coe brought up that slight discrepancy in the number of units, and that's in the staff's side. I don't think we responded to that calculation.
Yes, I can clarify. It is a total of 36 units. So it's 26 base units, 10 additional units, and that's an error on my behalf. My apologies.
Okay. Why was that additional unit created?
The applicant always had the ability for that additional unit, but the original project did not take advantage of it. With this redesign, they've incorporated that one additional residential unit back in.
I see. A couple of questions on the traffic issues, more generally to that inner, the problematic intersection we've all been talking about at Irvine and Avon and those intersection streets and the one-way. Separate from this project, I'd like to propose, and I'll do it more formally in another meeting, that we, that Public Works and Traffic look at this intersection. Now that we're adding to the density of this area, potentially adding to the density, being proposed, I think it's incumbent upon the city to look at this mishmash of streets that come in at all angles and one-way, no sidewalks, no lights. I think that's our responsibility, separate from this project regardless of what happens. Is this something that we have contemplated and we just never have done, or why haven't we addressed this area? If it's part of developing Mariners Mile, why haven't we looked at all the intersecting streets?
Yes, Mayor Avery and Council, Tony Bryant, City Traffic Engineer. We have been working with Tustin residents. We've heard the Tustin residents bring up their concerns regarding this traffic, but also some of the concerns that they currently have with the width of the street, with parking on both sides, all the activity, the joggers, the kids, the bicyclists, et cetera. So we've been working with them on different things that could be done on Tustin and on Ocean View to address their concerns with or without this project. And so right now, we're planning to come back to you, the council, in the meeting in August on the 24th with some ideas about things that can be done to address their concerns on Tustin.
Okay. Mr. Bryant, as long as you're standing there, and one more question. We've been discussing, and the residents have been talking, one of their major points of contention is that we, the city has not done a traffic study because the projected traffic uses come eight trips below the threshold or the trigger for requiring, mandating a traffic study. I mean, how precise is that really? How do you know? And I'm not questioning your professional ability, but how does anyone know precisely how many trips will be completed, whether it's 292, 295, as was originally proposed, and then it goes down? How do we really know that unless we do a study?
Right. We, to do the trip generation calculations for any project that comes through, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation rates. So that's a, those are national rates that are used by any city. They're in our traffic phasing ordinance that we're required to use those ITE trip generation rates in calculating project trips. So that's what we've done here.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just, it would have been helpful, I think, even if the project applicant could have done that, just to kind of put that idea to rest. But thank you. I have another question, Mr. Bryant, but you may not, no more traffic related. One thing I do want to say, I really do commend, and the residents have said this, that the applicant has done a magnificent job to improve the architectural design, the aesthetics of this whole project, and trying to blend into the expected or projected village atmosphere. I do think it's probably not correct for us to assume that this is the only project that's going to be completed in the next period of time. That would be in the architectural aesthetic of nautical architecture. So I guess I, I'm very appreciative that they have done it, but I will say in conjunction, while I'm appreciative, I have of the design and the redesign and the time and the financial and time investment to create this new design quickly. I'm disappointed to hear that there's only been one community meeting, if that was correctly stated, in February, and I'm just sorry to hear that. I think we, as a community, have a very informed and active community of interested parties, whatever the issue is. And I think one meeting with community is really not enough. Our residents deserve and demand more, and the outcome can still be a positive outcome for all concern. I just think it's a little bit of a, I don't know, just kind of tarnishes this whole process that there wasn't enough community involvement, really. That disappoints me. Having said that, because I spoke at the last meeting on the architectural issues and conformance with general, with the general plan, I mean, welcome to our world today. The state has new laws, the state has mandate. We, at the local level, are seeing our authority and power stripped away, as we all know. But the people did approve the general plan in 2006, if this concept, mixed use, was incorporated, the local coastal plan, the zoning code. All of this is in compliance. So the state has tied our, the council's hands, our hands, to say what we can approve or not, and density, intensity is changing as we, pending right now in Sacramento. I mean, our laws and our lives and our communities are dramatically changing because Sacramento is telling cities, "You cannot do that anymore. You have to build denser housing units and give bonuses for more affordability." And we all know that story on affordable housing. So we, welcome to the world of California in 2021. It's frightening. Just a couple other things that people brought up. The waivers on height, what is the height? Can someone tell me what the highest height is currently on, in this section of PCH, Mariners Mile? Has there been any structure built that's at 30, is it 34, 35 feet? Is this going to be the tallest structure in Mariners Mile right now?
Councilmember Dixon, Jim Campbell, Deputy Director, this won't be the tallest building in Mariners Mile. Obviously, the residential towers on the west end of the Mariners Mile area are much taller. 35 feet is allowable under the existing zoning. In fact, you can even do a sloping roof, would go up an additional five feet. You know, and so the applicant is seeking consideration of that 35-foot height.
and so the applicant is seeking consideration of that 35-foot height limit. So it is our upper height limit. It's not our base height limit of 26 feet. So, you know, in essence, this won't be the tallest building on the mile, but it, it's consistent with our zoning.
Okay, and just to address the general plan, I know Jim and you, Simone, are getting ready to commence the general plan update process with land use being, I believe, if I understand our conversations previously, land use will be the first one off the list to start looking at for this area, and also, I would suggest in the upper, our Newport Heights area and industrial area, these are two, Mariners Mile and Newport Heights and industrial area are two critical areas that need attention quickly in land use, in terms of land use planning, and to find ways to be more creative and finding ways that are available and compatible and complementary to our community, do residential and mixed use in a creative way. So I think that's all my questions now, but Simone, could you just remind everybody what our plan is on the general plan update, please?
So our goal was to get the housing element wrapped up here, and we're going to be submitting it probably in mid-August. And after that, we can go ahead and start pivoting towards the general plan update. We'll be back with the city council here a little bit later towards the year with really kind of talking about what's our next step with the general plan process. And so we want to kick that off before the end of the year. And probably we're going to recommend forming a general plan steering committee, and let the committee, let the committee direct which way we need to focus on. We need to update the land use element next. There are other elements of the general plan that we need to go ahead and update, but we think we need to go through a methodical process. And so we'll recommend some type of steering committee, and from there, we'll work with the steering committee members on really a plan of attack to start the update on the remainder of the general plan, with the land use going to be our priority.
Well, and I know from other conversations, thank you, Simone, too, but that Mariners Mile, I guess, has been bandied about, debated, planned and debated, and held, held back for over 20 years. So I think it, you know, it is a priority, and we shouldn't be having these challenges with every development. We did this with the Riverside project as well. Okay, well, thank you, Simone. All right, that's all my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to talk to the Housing Accountability Act just a little bit. So one of the things we've been talking about is a master plan, but, you know, the Housing Accountability Act has a discussion specifically about, in multiple places inside of it, discussing the requirements for denial, where the denial need to be based on objective standards, very specific ones, and they don't, and they actually specifically reference denial using design review standards as being inappropriate, absent the objective standards of, and this is the phrase from an objective, identified, written, public health or safety standards, policies or conditions, as they existed on the date, the application was, the application was deemed complete. The following should not constitute a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. Subdivision A is inconsistency with the zoning ordinance or general plan land use designation. That just, this, this code is terrible, and I think that most people would agree with that, but this is, this is where the state has put us in, and I think that it's probably worth just noting, first, the, the scope and scale of the project is 36 housing units and a small office, and the state mandates are going to require us to plan for at least 4,800 more under RENA. And quite frankly, if this project alone and the number of hearings we've had is an example of where we're heading as a city, then we're in for a very long eight years at least. But it's worth noting that with RENA, you know, we pushed back legally and legislatively, and it hasn't worked. So we're looking toward compliance because we can all agree that ignoring state law isn't something we're permitted to do. And actually, and we've said this repeatedly, it contradicts our oath of office when we're up there, even and perhaps especially when we disagree with the state policies. And the Housing Accountability Act, like I said earlier, is, is a good example of policy where people clearly don't agree with the state policy, not in this room, I don't know anyone in this room who does. But the problem is, this is a really clear example of the kind of hearing where I think the state legislature wanted to stop councils from denying housing projects. And this is, like I said, it's, you got the objective standard issue, and I have to admit, and I'm going to speak to Mr. Coe for a second because he quoted me, I have to admit, I wish we could start conversations by saying HAA, blah, blah, blah. And I do appreciate that you used my quote, but I have to say, I think it was misapplied there. The applicant does have the law, so you can stop, you don't have to start banging tables. And then Mr. Dunlap's point, we are indeed an arbiter, but a court will have the chance to review the city if pursued. And then he's the, or he or she is the arbiter. And I got to be honest, if we got in front of a court, our record will be weak at best. And if a court disagrees with us, we receive an order compelling it, we owe the applicant's attorney's fees in addition to our own, and if we somehow still don't comply, we can find at least $10,000 per unit plus more. This is the kind of thing that Woody's work was kind of based on, where the council wanted to do something that was contrary to the law, did it, got sued, lost, and ended up owing an enormous amount of attorney's fees. And I think that's exactly where we're headed with this, if we deny it. So I'm having, I'm struggling with the, I'm struggling with the burden or the overcoming the legal strictures placed on us. I agree with Ms. Dixon on that point. I thought the questions from Ms. Brenner were helpful, but I, I don't see a situation where this project is denied and we, and we survive in court. And the problem, and I'm just going to point this out, for the folks worried about, you know, what the future of Mariners Mile looks like in total, starting with this project and having a court overturn our decision, such a terrible precedent for a much larger project going down the pike, and I think we all know that. And so I, I think as we look at this specific project and the law as, as it's dealing with it, I don't see a situation where we have the bandwidth or wherewithal to be able to, bandwidth's the wrong word. I don't know that, I don't know that we have the situation where we can make the findings required, in fact, don't believe we can make the findings required to deny this project under the Housing Accountability Act. And so I'm open to further comments from council, but that's, that's what I'm, read, that's what I've heard, and that's what I think.
Thank you, Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, first I wanted to ask about, and this might be a question that Councilman O'Neill would chime in on before I proceed. A Mariners Masters Plan, what would that look like, especially now as we're in the housing element? What would that look like? Is there, is there room to put it in now? Maybe Simone could take a crack at it first, and then Will, if you want to chime in, happy to hear what your thoughts are.
So thank you, Councilmember Muldoon. There is a Mariners Mile revitalization plan that got, went through the process, a lot of, a lot of public input, but it was back in 2016 and 2017. We can definitely pull out that plan and start to revisit it and see what it needs to get amended in that plan, if it satisfies what the community's looking for or not. At the time, back in 2017, it was becoming very contentious and controversial what that, that plan was. And so if you recall, the staff and the community worked together through a charrette process to develop the plan, but yet at the end, when the draft came out, it was become very contentious. So we can definitely pull that out and see what the, and start the charrette process again. Or we could just throw it away and start anew and go forward through the general plan update process and start from scratch, really, and start doing, hiring a consultant, bringing the consultant onboard, doing these community outreach meetings and the charrette process to see what is the vision that the community has for Mariners Mile. One thing I want to remind the city council, under SB 330, we cannot really reduce the density of residential units. So that is something, another handcuff that we have, and they're looking to extend, SB 330's supposed to sunset in 2025, they're trying to extend it out to 2030. So it, I would suggest that we pull out the revitalization plan that was drafted and start from there and see if that can be amended and cleaned up.
Let me ask you bluntly, before I get into process, can we insert design standards with a, with a master plan that would be sort of regionally based?
Only objective design standards that, you know, is it three-feet articulation? It can't be nautical theme or coastal theme. It has to be very objective.
So we're able to get, in this situation, the applicant to submit something that fits a more desirable design, but typically, even if we have a regional sort of master plan in place, it does not change HAA or what we can and can't do?
No, correct.
Okay.
If I could jump in for just a second, you wouldn't be able to add additional criteria like that to this project because it's basically fixed in time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, totally understand. Thank you, Council, for that. Yeah, so that was the point, I think, that Mr. Campbell made as well. Okay, so I don't think you need to answer that, Will, because I think it looks like it's not going to really do that much for us. I mean, it's unbelievable what the state has done with these laws. Mr. Dunlap made a point about adverse impact, and Mr. Harper, are we allowed to consider that in this decision?
Yeah, so like, I think everyone's said, I mean, the state's really tied the hands of the city council, what you can look at and what you can't. You can only look at basically objective standards and nothing objective. So if there's any type of objective standard, for instance, you know, they need five parking places and they only have four parking places, that's a nice objective standard, and that's something you could use to take a look at whether or not the density should be reduced or the project should be denied. But anything that's subjective, you just can't look at that under the Housing Accountability Act. I know the state's really taking away a lot of local control here, and I know the public doesn't like it, but that's put you in a bad position because, you know, these projects are held to very strict standards.
So, but regarding the adverse impact, the standard would be shifted to us if we were to assert that?
So anytime you make a finding that, under the Housing Accountability Act, that some type of criteria should result in the project either being reduced in size or being denied, the burden actually shifts to the city to prove that up. Typically, you're given a lot of discretion with your decisions as opposed to bearing, bearing the burden of proving up with facts to support your decision. But that's the case that the state's put us in, is that every, every decision you make that's on that objective standard, to deny a project or reduce the density, then the council actually bears the burden of proof on those issues.
And as it sits now, before that burden of proof is shifted to us, is it your legal opinion that we have the ability to disapprove this project when considering HAA or other applicable laws?
Well, I have not heard an objective standard articulated yet that would support a basis for denial or reduction of the density. I don't know if Mr. Jursis would like to weigh in on, on the objective versus subjective standards and what, what you can look at, but it doesn't seem to me that there's any objective criteria here that they're not complying with.
Mr. Hart?
Oh. If you want to take a quick break, I know there's some people still here and go back to Agenda Item Number 13, I believe the results are in. So maybe we could, we could, maybe we could take a few-minute break, go, go do the results for 13, or take a few-minute break and then do the results for 13 while we get this all organized?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll take a five-minute break, where we take a look at Agenda Item Number 13, which is the undergrounding district, and make sure we got all of our ducks in a row, and then we'll go back to that item, and then we'll come back to this one. Does that sound okay, Mayor Avery?
Yep.
the results are ready relative to Item 13, Proposed Assessment District Number 124, roughly a 50-block area of central Babo Island. Before we receive the results, I will ask my council colleagues, we used to have some joy, if they have any conflicts, to recuse themselves. They're just getting so used to recusing themselves, they're just gone, yeah. But again, thank you for your patience. Madam Clerk?
So they've already announced their conflicts, but Mayor Pretum, Muldoon has a conflict related to business interest, and Councilmember Blom has a conflict based on real property interest that they announced earlier in the evening.
Thank you.
So based on the tabulations for the ballots received, 65.29% of the ballots were submitted in favor of the assessment district for a total assessment of $16,961,714, which represents 51.68% of the total assessment amount of $32,815,000, $815,700. 34.71% of the votes were submitted in opposition for a total assessment of $9,017,000. So based on the ballot tabulation, it is appropriate for the city council, if it is your desire, to proceed with affirmation of Assessment District Number 124 by adopting the resolution confirming the assessment. The resolution is the formal action declaring the results of the ballot procedure, ordering the acquisition of the improvements, making determinations, confirming the assessments, and approving the assessment engineer's final report.
Thank you. Do we have any council comments?
I would just like to make a motion that we approve the assessment district.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
And just for clarification, that'd be removing Item B of the staff recommendation.
Right. Okay, let's vote.
Okay, Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield is absent. Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Mayor Avery?
Yes.
So with, oh goodness, Councilmember Duffield absent and recusals by Blom and Muldoon, the motion carries, one, two, three, four, zero.
All right, I think we were talking about objective standards at the time, and I just have a question about that. Would coastal views be part of objective standards or the loss thereof?
So there's separate law that's out there that basically says the Coastal Act needs to be complied with, that's a separate body of law.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For Simone, I just know you're going to chime in really quickly and piggyback on what the city attorney had asked you as well, the question I asked about any objective standards you've seen.
In the, this current version of the project, the applicant has complied with, I want to say with all the objective standards in our zoning code and general plan.
Okay. No, not quite, still, yeah, I do. Someone's in a hurry. Normally, I'm in a hurry. Tonight, you're in a hurry. Just a couple of things about, to the audience. I have no plans for Mariners Mile. I personally have no development goals or redevelopment goals. That was something that was mentioned the city had, and I think prior councils, and our council puts documents together all the time. I personally don't have any. I definitely don't think you're no people or bad people. I think you're great people. When I first heard the project, to be honest, I was very upset by it because I thought it was tone deaf, and I expressed that in conversations with some of the people who were opposed to the project, and that's why I voted no on the continuance. I was trying to send a message, and I hope that anyone who wants to build on Mariners Mile understands that I will do what I can to protect the aesthetics of our city. That really is pushing the envelope as far as what can be done legally, as you've heard. I will tell you honestly, I was pleasantly surprised, Mr. Moshietti, that you made those changes. Actually, I was shocked. I appreciate them very much. In my perfect world, still probably them very much. In my perfect world, it still probably looked a little bit different, but I feel personally that my hands are tied legally as far as what can and cannot be done. That is essentially my position, just listening to council and what my colleagues have said. I did have a couple of questions. One was about elevator shafts, and was that fully covered? And is that something that someone had, a point someone brought up that I wanted to ask about?
The simulations that were provided tonight reflect the total height of the building, so there's, there's no added elevator overruns that are projected as part of the project.
So there's, nothing's going to show up later that wasn't shown schematically?
Correct.
There's not going to be an extra space or view blocked or?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, do you know what they were talking about? Was that just a confused or inconsistent statement, or is there something they're talking about that I'm not aware of?
You know, it's more common to use projects with overruns, but they do have models that don't require them these days. They're more expensive, and this project did not propose an overrun as part of the, of the project.
Okay, so they decided to submit something that essentially would be fully complete. So concerns about missing elevator shafts would apply to some projects but isn't applied to this project, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And they have an easement to Avon, which answers the question about access through the, through the other side. Can you tell me your opinion on widening versus not widening that area?
Let me see if I can understand the question. One is them having an opinion about whether we should widen it or not widen it. I, I think at the end of the day, I think it would be helpful to widen that area, and, and the applicants offered to dedicate that additional land. It doesn't obligate the city to do that widening, but if the city chooses to do so in the future to provide additional maneuverability in that area, it might prove beneficial.
So even if we don't exercise that offer immediately, it's still going to exist according to approvals in front of us tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. And you, it's nice to have, but you didn't make a contingent upon approval, I see.
That's correct.
Let's see if I have anything else here. A couple of notes. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brunner?
I have a couple more questions. Why was the, why was Sean's letter not included in the public record? Why, why have the people been having a hard time finding that? That came to us several days ago. I don't know why.
My understanding is that was made available to the public. I kind of jumped in there a little bit earlier, but I have a copy right here that's in the folder. I believe they were put out front. I'll turn to the city clerk about that, but I believe it was made available.
Yes, the city attorney is correct. It is made available. There are some in the vestibule also. It might not be, I have to double check when it was received, but it seems since it was here tonight that we just received it recently to provide to council.
Because it seemed like they were saying it's not in the packet or on the city's website. So is, was that the objection?
If it's a late correspondence, then it will eventually be with the whole packet, but it was, if it, I haven't looked online to see if it is included with it. However, it is present here tonight and in the vestibule, or what was, unless everyone took copies of it.
Okay, all right. And a couple more questions. Can the applicant down the line change office to retail to achieve a more village-like atmosphere, is the citizens are asking for? Can he do that? Maybe I should ask you.
Councilmember Brunner?
Or a portion of it?
The, the answer is no. They can't change it to retail, not without additional review. The, the traffic study determination is predicated on office trip generation, not retail trip generation. I will say, though, if, if that was reviewed and authorized at a future date, that, that parking would work out because the parking for office and retail is the same. So there might be a possibility to do that, but we'd have to do and look at the traffic impacts of that.
So if he wanted to do something like a little coffee shop or a sandwich place or something, which, which is what the community is kind of asking for, that it be something that is enhances their community and makes it more of a village atmosphere, so he could?
It, it's theoretically possible. There would be a process to go through. We would do the trip generation analysis. We'd do the traffic study for that review, and then that would go through a process to the planning commission for review and approval, and there would be, if it was a food use, it would be a minor use permit. So it's not precluded from doing that in the future, but there would be a process that would include that traffic study.
Okay. And another question about the coastal commission's concern about us blocking views from parks. Is there a percentage involved there, or does like every bit of John Wayne Park have to maintain the same view that it had before?
Like, I can't speak for the coastal commission how they would evaluate a view blockage, if you will. There, there is no percentages that I'm aware of in the Coastal Act or in our city policies or LCP, so suggests that, you know, you know, some percentage of a view beyond which would be a significant impact. So, and that's kind of the subjective nature of protecting views. Now, you know, we looked at the view. It is a very wide panoramic view, and then that small little blue water area that is pinched in that one vantage point, we felt was not a significant impairment of the view because it is a very wide panoramic view.
Okay, and I just, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I would be very appreciative if we really took that circulation element and did a major outreach to the Newport Heights community to figure out, because I think that, that is problematic, that area, and it concerns me that adding any more cars there can be, I mean, it's dangerous for a lot of the kids up there and a lot of the walkers and a lot of the people that just frequent that area. And anyway, so that, that would just be a personal request. The other thing is, I do want to say that I appreciate what they have done to improve this project. It, especially hearing that the design standards, they were not obligated to go by the Mariners' Mile kind of nautical theme that we all like, but knowing that they're not obligated to do that makes me even more appreciative of the fact that they've gone to the effort they have in order to make this a much better project than it was. So I appreciate that, and that's all for me.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes, thank you. Just a few more questions for me, too. Just going back to the Avon widening, two things. So Jim, you just said that it's not a requirement, and if we were to approve this plans going forward, that Avon would be widened, so it's, could you please just explain what you just said?
Certainly, Councilmember Dixon. What, what I was indicating is that obviously there's a condition of approval on the project that the applicant would dedicate the area described earlier this evening, but what I was getting to is that it wouldn't really obligate the city to widening Avon Street. Now, obviously, if it's important to do so to provide additional maneuvering in the area, this would be a separate capital improvement project, and once it goes through its review with Public Works and consultation with the community and then with the council, then that might be a future CIP project. But, you know, in no way, action on the project tonight, it wouldn't obligate us to do that project, but it provides that opportunity to do that project in the future.
All right, well, that's a very important point, distinction you've made, so that it would be a conditional use for the project. However, the city, a future city council or the city council would have to approve a capital improvement project to authorize that work to be done. The applicant may create the easement or, or allow for that easement, but the work has to be done. So to that point on the work, on the parking spaces that are currently, public parking on the water side, if you will, or the west side of Avon, now they're going to move adjacent to the residential property. Is that really where we would put parking, public parking spaces?
Councilmember Dixon, that's, that's just a concept that the applicant kind of put together. It does show some distinct advantages on how it would intersect with the, the intersection there on Tustin, to kind of realign it a little to the south. It's just a picture of what it could be, but it's definitely not something that the city has fully vetted, and it, you know, that, that project design would, would potentially be different. So as I said, we're not obligated to do that precise design that you saw.
And Councilmember Dixon, this is Simone Juerges. So the, the condition that it specified, that the applicant is willing to dedicate that portion of their property and only pay for that portion of their property. They're, they're not, they haven't offered to pay for all of Avon widening, and the, the burden of Avon would be on the city. And, and it's really going to be up to the city council to accept that condition or either remove that condition with regards to that portion of dedication and paying for that portion of Avon improvement.
Okay, I just, a couple speculative-type questions. And so, for example, there's the public parking lot, Avon, we call Avon Parking Lot. I'm sure that could be looked at, again, in terms of space allocation and maybe those additional, how many spaces are we talking about there that we're moving around?
Sixteen spaces.
Sixteen?
Correct.
Anyway, it's a little bit problematic. Is there any way in this discussion and this agreement that we could require the project applicant to pay for that? Is that a separate discussion item at this late date, at this 11th hour?
It, it is a little late, and you'd have to have that conversation with the applicant.
Okay, all right. That's, thank you, Simone. I just have some other comments in general. Someone made the comment earlier, or maybe it was Mr. O'Neill, that we're going to be having thousands of projects and units, apartment, residential units coming forward, and so we're going to be a lot of heavy lifting in the months and years ahead. For Mariners' Mile until we have a new master plan or new updated general plan, so we're probably talking at least two years, I'm just making this public statement on my own personal opinion that I implore future developers, as they develop their land, their property rights to develop their land, that they take into consideration the community. That's all we ask, and that's typically how it's done. And I think projects go a lot more smoothly when the community and residents are integral to that project process. And I think we're going to be a little exposed here in the next couple of years because there's going to be a Wild Wild West development going on up here because of the state has imposed these mandates on us, and we're handcuffed. Simone used that term a moment ago. I think that's a very appropriate word. We are handcuffed to the state of California, and what's going on, coming out of Sacramento, just sitting here. These laws are being made that will handcuff it. But I just implore applicants to work with the community and make it so we can protect what we treasure and, and value in our community, is the villages and, and the architectural detail. We as a city, we're not Laguna Beach. We don't require design standards, but it's expected that developer, project applicants come in respecting how we do things in Newport Beach. We want the housing, but we want quality, and we want to be respectful of our neighbors. You know, we've had a number, a great number in the housing element, public statements from the folks who live over in Harvard View about how an ordinance was created in the 60s between them and the Irvine Company and the city to protect their viewpoint. Is that something we could do? Obviously, it's separate action, I get that, but is that something we could do? Is it too late in the, I'm not, it wouldn't apply to this project, I get that. Going forward, just to be sure we protect ourselves, maybe Mr. Juerges, if you wouldn't mind. Can we do that? Can we consider that? A proposed ordinance to define the viewpoint and to protect what's there?
That's, that's an interesting question. But, you know, separate from this particular project, we've never really, we don't have a viewpoint protection ordinance. That, that's something that the, you know, council, if they choose to do that, that's something we can definitely review. I'm just kind of turning to staff to see how, how much effort it'll take to kind of develop an ordinance like that. You know, what you really need to do is, if we want to develop that ordinance, is that you have to take, you have to document all the views and take a snapshot of time. And that's something that this, this city has really kind of shied away from doing in any part of the town. So it'll be up to the council of whether they even want to pursue some type of viewpoint ordinance protection like that.
Because what, I appreciate that, and I know it's a heavy lift, probably, but you used, or Jim used the term when you were assessing the viewpoint impact on, via this project. You said, "We," meaning you, I guess, the staff, "determined it was not significant." Well, there was no quantifiable measurement to say what's significant or not. Now, that to me is not a significant, or is not an objective standard, and we're talking about objective standard. So I raised that at the 11th hour because I, I think going forward with these developments that are going to be coming forward, we need more objective standards, and we need to codify that, so we don't just say, "We, staff, decided it's not significant." Well, it wasn't significant to you, but to the residents who live up there, it's significant. So I think we needed to create objective standards on the viewpoint. So that's what I'll say right now. Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to see where the votes are, so I'm going to move staff recommendation.
Mr. Muldoon, seconds.
I just have, oh, there's something.
Mr. Mayor, was, we didn't hear what the motion was. I'm sorry, from a staff standpoint, because we wanted to make sure if there was a staff motion to approve, we just wanted to incorporate the changes on the conditions.
Okay, yeah, I think that was, that was the motion with staff approval.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of comments. You know, the widening of Avon and the parking I know is not a, it's just a drawing of what, what's possible, but it's a very unique spot there. It's sort of, there's a community there in the building that's just toward the bay from the, from the corner of Avon and Tustin, and then there's a residence on the other side, and people cross there all the time, and it, I think widening it would, would wind up with faster traffic, and I think widening, or I don't know, I think you definitely don't want to have faster traffic on Tustin. That's just my feeling. I go up and down it all the time, and it's, so I'm not going to engineer anything here, but I know Tony can work with the residents and then come up with where we're really making that street, not, certainly not increasing speeds on, on that street. And I think it's that, that entrance to Avon is, is a place where people are walking all the time, and I wouldn't want to see it faster. People should be moving slowly through there. And so things that we can do to, to keep traffic slow is, is good, and so that's my recommendation just from what I've seen. And it, it is interesting, it's, it's a good community of folks and also businesses right down in that area. And really, it's, it approaches a village situation right there, and with a little more planning, and there's a big parking lot there, stuff can be done to make that, and continues all the way to Mr. Jabar's project at Seisebonne. You know, that could be even made much better, and that is a little village into itself, as far as I'm concerned. I grew up down there. My father had an office in 1965 on Coast Highway between Riverside and Tustin on the, on the bayside, and as a kid, I just ran up and down between the Sea Scout Base and Roseanne's, for those of you that are older, which used to make airplane fasteners on the bay there and had a boatyard. And you could always get down to the docks, and you could move all along the waterfront, over seawalls and long docks, and, and everything was commercial. There were boatyards and marine hardware stores, and there were actually, just about anything you needed for a boat was along that stretch, and which is why it's called Mariners' Mile. It's just a shadow of itself now. And I think, you know, it's, it's difficult to be long-term residents of, of this town and see things that you treasure go away. And, but it's the culture of this town. It's interesting how we, we're, we're, we're always renewing, it seems to me. You know, a litmus test for me was when the China House was torn down. You know, you would think of all the structures in town, oh, there's no way we could have preserved that, but it's just part of the loss that we have, and the older you are, the more, you know, the town is no longer recognizable to you, and that's a hard thing for many of us. And... And the traffic notwithstanding, and Coast Highway's always been a tough road right through there. It's always been fast. Along PCH, as we know, it does not invite connectivity. It does not invite pedestrian. Nobody thinks about strolling along the sidewalk on PCH for fun. Let's go for a nice walk down PCH. I mean, the cars are doing 70 miles an hour along there. It's really it's scary and it's noisy and it generates its own wind. So it's really hard, I think, to assume that we're going to build projects on the highway. They're going to be conducive to people walking to restaurants and things, and they do. And people take their lives in their hands when they walk across Pacific Coast Highway to get to, you know, those restaurants on the other side. But I think a lot can be done in the area I described between Tustin and Riverside, where already quite a bit's been done where Sei Cibon is, and I think it's great. Some residents have some issues, I understand that, but overall, I think it's an improvement. And a lot can be done on the oceanfront. I'm really excited about the eventual walkway along the bayfront that will be going all the way from the Baboah Bay Club to eventually all the way up to the bridge going over on the Lido Peninsula as properties redevelop. And certainly, this project, Minutia's project along there, because of the coastal commission, will have to have a 12-foot walkway. And that'll make that project great because that will be a place where people can sit out and enjoy a meal, where they can shop and all the rest of it. So they're really exciting. I think the future is exciting, but it's also daunting in terms of the scale of development that's going to happen on the inland side that affects people who live above that place and have looked for years at a at a view that's tremendous because Arnold Haskell and Don Haskell never maximized the development of that land. They left it pretty much open space. And when they built Canos or what was then the Stuff Shirt Restaurant, they it was all the way to the right. And then they developed the Ardell Yacht Brokerage Building, and that sat down real low on the hillside on the far left and just created this big open space. And it is absolutely wonderful. And it's really tough to see that being that's going to go away because unfortunately, a long time, you know, in 2006, somewhere in there, I remember it was in the old council-built chambers when proponents, before they brought the Ardell property on the market, they saw it was going to be sold within the next 10 or 20 years, and they went to the city to get mixed use and got it. And that really set it for where we are today, unfortunately. And now it's been turbocharged by the state as this as the with their quote-unquote solutions for more housing. And it makes being on the dais up here absolutely terrible, in my view, because we've lost our ability to work with residents and deliver for residents. It's so much of it's out of our hands. And I know this sounds like I'm making an excuse here, but it's really true. We it it it's really tough, and we're just going to see much more of it, I'm afraid, and we're just going to have to deal with it. And when people talk about circulation, there's so little we can do in places like our neighborhoods. What are we going to do? Widen Tustin? Have it three lanes or two lanes or, you know? We don't have sidewalks as it is, so this and we can't we can't dead-end every damn street. Tony knows all about that. And so we're at a tough spot with this project. I with the rest of my council members commend Mr. Mosciotti for doing the right thing and spending the time and treasure to after listening to what residents were looking for. And, you know, I think in these situations, you don't get everything you want on either side, but he absolutely didn't have to do what he did, which is make that project look a lot better. And I think he wound up with a better project because of it, just because I think the team got dug down and came up with something that is great for them and it's good for the city. And it hopefully sets a tone for the rest of the development because we can't dictate to people what to do to have the right to develop their property as they see fit, but we can inform them. And I think that's what's happened here, and that's that is an excellent thing, this community has informed about their desires, aspirations for the property, and not in terms of what can be there because we know what is going to be there, but how it looks, how basically, what is its face to the community. And to me, the face of that building on the front and on Avon is so much better than it could have been for us. And it's because Mr. Mosciotti decided to make it better. And I think that should be said, and I think we have all said it to a certain extent here. So going forward, I know Protect Mariners Mile is not going away, and the work is just beginning to continue the effort to salvage what we can and get the best development we can in this town and working with folks to get it done. But with the state involved as they are, we're going to just see more density. That's the whole mantra of the state now, and so we're going to have to put up with that, and that's going to add more cars on the road. And we know we can't create circulation. I mean, we can nibble around the edges, but we can't create more roads. They're there, and things we'll just have to do what we can to mitigate what will inevitably be more traffic, whether we block off the end right there between Cliff Drive and Tustin. We could dead-end that street, but then it's just going to force everybody up and going they're still going to go through the heights. And so and for all of us, I live on Holly Lane, and it's, you know, I see what's going on. We all know it's just gotten worse, but we're going to have to do what we can and work with traffic to get the traffic, get our streets safer somehow. We've got to absolutely come together to do that. So there's much more work to be done here. Thank you. Any other council comments?
Shall we vote?
Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Muldoon? Mayor Avery?
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to vote no in the worst way, but I don't want guys. Got to hang with it. It's tough.
Motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing.
All right. Do we have any motions for reconsideration? Hearing none. Tonight, we are adjourning in the memory of Terry Donahue, and Mr. O'Neil will give us a little reading on about Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry Donahue passed away on July 4, 2021, at the age of 77, surrounded by his family at his home on Baboah Island. Born on June 24, 1944, Terry was the second of five sons. Terry decided to walk on and play football at UCLA. He became a two-year starter on teams that registered classic victories over USC and the number-one rated Michigan State Spartans in the 1966 Rose Bowl. After graduating from UCLA, he became an assistant coach to the late Pepper Rogers at the University of Kansas. It was there that he met the love of his life, Andrea. Terry and Andrea were married two weeks after she graduated from college and were happily married for 52 years. Coach Donahue followed Pepper Rogers back to UCLA for three seasons. When Rogers decided to leave for his alma mater, Georgia Tech, following the 1973 season, Terry remained on the Bruins staff with Dick Vermeil. After Vermeil left for the NFL, Terry became the youngest coach in major college football at just 31 years of age. Donahue then spent 20 years as the head coach of his alma mater, leading his teams to 13 bowl games and three Rose Bowl victories. He had a hand in all five of UCLA's Rose Bowl victories, one as a player, one as an assistant coach, and the three wins as head coach. His teams were ranked in the top 20 nationally 12 times, and he had five top 10 finishes. Coach Donahue retired from the Bruins following the 1995 season as the winningest coach in Pac-8, Pac-10, and Pac-12 history. Locally, Coach Donahue served on the board of the Pacific Club Impact Foundation for 16 years and on the board of the Kid Works Dan Donahue Center, an organization whose mission is to restore at-risk neighborhoods in their community. For two years, Coach Donahue fought a courageous battle with cancer. He is survived by his loving wife Andrea and the three daughters Nicole, Michelle, and Jennifer, three sons-in-laws, and 10 grandchildren. In lieu of flowers, the family requests donations he made to the Rose Bowl Legacy Foundation, which you can find at www.terrydonahuetribute.com. And I can say, and a whole lot of folks who's TNTB, but he was always a gentleman, and he was one of those he's one of those people that is a really difficult loss to our community that will never be forgotten. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We are adjourned.